Good afternoon, Milpitas. I'm your 2022 Board President Kelly Yip Chuan. Welcome to this meeting of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in the our education proceedings, which aligns with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for opening meetings. Tune into our hybrid-style board meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube or in person inside our boardroom. Today's meeting begins with a study session. Public comments can be made while you're logged into Zoom or if you are in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. Let's call this meeting to order. Scott, would you help me do a roll call, please?
Okay, roll call, vote. Board member Si. Board member Leanne.
Here.
Board clerk Niall.
Here.
Board vice president Norwood.
Here.
And board president Yip Chuan.
Here. Thank you and our board, oh, did you record that already? And our board, student board reps will be joining us at a later, for later for open session. So item three, review and approve study session agenda.
Motion to approve study session agenda.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, Scott.
Okay, board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Niall.
Yes.
Board vice president Norwood.
Yes.
And board president Yip Chuan.
Yes.
For.
Alrighty, thank you. Comments from the public regarding the study session agenda? Are there any public comments?
We have no public comments at this time.
Oh, right. Okay, so study session begin with learning and development.
Thank you. As we pull up the PowerPoint, I am Kriti Johari, the Executive Director of Learning and Innovation, and I'm joined here by leaders in the L and D Department. I'll just have them each introduce themselves. Good afternoon, Yvonne Sugimura, Coordinator of English Learners, Literacy and Intervention.
Good afternoon, Marissa Coide, the Director of Secondary Education.
Good afternoon. My name is Raquel Kusnoki, Director of Elementary Education.
So thank you for joining us this afternoon. As Vice President Chris Norwood just said, this is his favorite meeting of the year. So that's good, good for us, but it's, task, test headlines have been, or test, national test scores, state test scores have been in the headlines for the last month, right? Whether you're looking at Edweek, EdSource, New York Times, everyone's talking about the test scores and what they say nationwide. And some of the headlines are pretty stark. Some of them are talking about how we, twenty years of gains have been lost as a result of the pandemic. And today, we're going to dig deeper into what's happening here in Milpitas. I think it's really important as we dig into our data today that we really think about this year as a, as a new baseline. There is what we were doing pre-pandemic, but the last two years both have expressed or have resulted in pretty interrupted learning for our students, even though we were back in person last year. When COVID outbreaks were happening, there was still a lot of interruptions to that learning. Some of the highlights, like the big things that I would preview for you, is that while the national context is talking about these huge gaps in learning that have resulted in pandemic, there are some bright spots for us here in Milpitas. When we look at where we are, where we were pre-pandemic and where we are now in aggregate, our outcomes are pretty steady. That's, that is something important for us to look at. However, as we dig deeper into that data, as we disaggregate it, there are definite equity gaps. And so we're going to start to shine some light on what those gaps are, as well as share our thinking on like, okay, here's how we're starting to unpack what we think might be happening, or here are the next set of questions that we're asking, and here's how we're following up with site leaders to better understand and better partner with them about what we think is happening for students and what curricular shifts would look like, what needs to happen at tier one, as well as what additional supports need to happen. So on that end, you'll also hear some tier one shifts around assessments, like what we're thinking about for middle school. And then just last week, Coordinator Sugimura and I were able to attend a conference in Southern California with two of our elementary principals, principals from Zanker and Spangler to really think about high-impact tutoring. What are the conditions and criteria to set up tutoring that's going to lead to academic gains as well as the, the self-development of student morale and their academic identity? So those are conversations that are starting in response to, to what we're seeing happening for our students. To dig deeper into the data, I'm going to hand it off to Marissa.
Thank you. Scott, if we can go to the next slide, please. So CASP, or the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. Why is it important? Why does it matter? Why do we spend a whole hour talking to you and analyzing the data alongside you? The real reason is we want to know our students' strengths and their areas for growth. And by having the information and the data, we are able to then plan what our instructional focus will be for the coming year. We also are able to look at comparative data to the county and the state. Today, we will be providing some comparative data to the county, not to the state yet, as it has not been released. And third, we really want to be able to look at our unduplicated groups and our subgroups and interrogate or really look into, what are the equity systems we have in place in our district and are they working? Specifically around our core tier one curriculum and instruction, and especially our culturally responsive practices. I do also want to provide some context that in spring of 2020 and 2021, we did not administer the CASP to grades third through eighth due to the pandemic. So the comparative data you're going to see locally is from spring of 2019 to just this past spring of 2022. And I will now be passing it over to Raquel, who will share some of the elementary data with you.
Thank you, Ms. Coide. I want to thank the administrators who are joining us today to learn a little bit more about how our students did in the spring of 2022. As you all know, unpacking the performance data for our students requires a lot of time and attention to detail. Those are important for us to understand their story, story behind what was happening 2019, 2022, 2022, and the next steps we need to take accordingly to meet all of our students' needs. So with that, before I begin or before we begin to preview the data, I just want to walk you through some logistics. Marissa and I will be presenting each data as slides to you. I'll be going over grades three to six. Marissa will go over seven, eight, and eleven. And what we're going to do is we'll walk you through all students first, and then we'll get into the disaggregated data. And then we're going to pause at the end of each slide. You should all have a packet in front of you. There's a little section with the data at the top of the page for you to take notes or jot down some questions during our presentations so that you can ask at the end of each slide. Nobody forgets. All right. So in looking at this slide in front of us, we're going to start with the very left side of the screen, where you see the four tall bars, and right underneath it says all students. The blue bar represents our LCAP year three, which is, or LCAP, sorry, year one. LCAP year one, which is our established baseline. It is our, oh, it's the first year of our LCAP cycle, which is why it's our established baseline. If you notice in the blue bar, at the very top, it says sixty-nine percent, which means sixty-nine percent of all students in grades three through six met or exceeded grade level standards in English Language Arts. We're talking about this slide right here, this side. If you notice the blue bar, which is the LCAP cycle year one, that's our baseline. The red bar right next to it is student performance from the spring of 2022.
We don't have that.
No, it's not the same, because the graph on ours says seventy-five percent.
So it should say slides four in there.
We have a seventh through eleven.
Okay, I'm sorry, it was inadvertently omitted. But if you can turn your attention to the screen instead. We're looking at all students.
We're paying attention. See that? We are paying attention.
So right now, we're looking at all student performance. And we're looking at blue bar, which is from 2019, and the red bar, which is from spring 2022. If you notice, when you compare the, the two bars, the blue and the red, our students maintained an average of sixty-nine percent achievement level in the areas of English Language Arts. Now, while we do not see an increase, and we always want to see an increase, I do want to remind everybody that this is still considered growth for our students. As Ms. Executive Director Joe Hari pointed out, nationwide, there was a drop in student learning overall. Considering the disruption that was happening, I remember 2022, in preparation for our students' return, we were focused on our students' overall health and well-being, and put into place systems of support such as mental health counselors to ensure that every child's emotional, social, emotional learning needs were met. And as a result, even though the world was in chaos, our students were able to persevere and still grow and learn under the conditions. So sixty-nine percent, 2022, is still a plus, and we need to acknowledge everybody, all of you who've been a part of that. To make things better, compare the red bar to the gold bar Santa Clara County. Overall, third through sixth grade students in Santa Clara County achieved fifty-eight percent in English Language Arts. We outperformed Santa Clara County by eleven percent, which is definitely something to celebrate and to highlight tonight. But our work's not done. As we work to work towards our seventy-five percent goal for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we can't overlook the rest of the students on the right side of the, all students. All students in our, when you disaggregate the data by student groups, you notice that our students who are English language learners, our students from low-income families, our students with disabilities, our Latinx students, and our students of African ancestry did not do as well as the overall. You see the success gaps just looking at this graph. While some of them out to Santa Clara County, overall student groups, we want to bring attention to our students of African ancestry, because not only did they not outdo Santa Clara County, they decreased by almost fifty percent. In analyzing that data, I had to ask what was going on the year 2020, when we were bringing students in cohorts back to school, we were talking about our most vulnerable students. I can't help to wonder if these, our students of African ancestry came back to join those cohorts. And further analyzing what is impeding their ability to meet grade level standards, I noticed what stood out was the, the foundational skills in phonics and language comprehension. Our students, our English language learners and our students of African ancestry are very similar in their need. Language comprehension, and it just made me wonder why language comprehension, I get it for our English learners, but I didn't really understand why that would be an issue for our students of African ancestry. What I discovered was eleven of the students are African, are students of African ancestry, eleven of them, eleven of them have a second language. And until I unpacked individual students, I realized that some of them struggled again. Just made, just learning the English language, standard English language spoken, written, or yeah, in their text. The other piece that I discovered in analyzing this data is of the forty-seven students, our African-American students, there was quite a high number of students who had chronic absenteeism from third grade all the way to sixth grade. And I want to, you'll see the data, you have the data actually in front of you. Next slide, please. In this graph, we see student performance against grade three to six in English Language Arts. The red bar is the IREDDI Diagnostic III, which was administered late February, early March. The blue bar represents the CASP, which was administered right around April. So the window from the time they finished the Diagnostic III to to April nineteen, what had happened was it gave the students more time to master grade level standards in the area of English Language Arts, which is why you see a larger gap, so the additional time teachers using the data to understand what subskill students needed, needed to help prepare for CASP. In front of you, you'll see this chart. On that chart, can you click on the knowledge and skills link, please, Scott? On the far left bottom. So IREDDI is administered three times a year, and we use it to help monitor our students' learning towards the end-of-year grade-level expert, learning outcomes.
Three times a year, which grades?
I'm sorry.
Three times a year, which grades?
For, uh, three times a year for kinder all the way to six. Kinder just starts later, like they take the first one in November because they're still learning how to use Chromebook. The reason why I have this up here is for the administrators to also see is this is a really good way to monitor student progress towards English language, toward meeting the grade-level expectation in English Language Arts. As I mentioned earlier, phonics and vocabulary is the number one, are the two big things that get in the way of our students comprehending what they're reading or producing grade-level writing. Where the arrows are, you notice how vocabulary, they, they met, they tested out in the high frequency and tested out in the phonological awareness. But with some level of vocabulary, they were still able to meet grade-level standards on CASP. Same thing for this second student here. They tested out of all the phonics, had some enough that they needed in vocabulary, and were able to meet grade-level standards in the English Language Arts and CASP. Same thing for the students of the, down here. I added the absences on the right column because I needed to make sense of their attendance record. Are, are they attending school? Because that's another barrier for them, right? And I'm going to come back to the student progress monitoring. Can you go to the next slide, please? Okay. So just like I said earlier, with regard to English Language Arts, our students maintained sixty-four percent achievement level in the areas of mathematics, 2019 versus 2022. This is overall. And yes, we outdid Santa Clara County. And yes, we still have lots of work to do to meet our seventy-five percent goal in the areas of mathematics. Again, when it's disaggregated, it's where you see the discrepancy in learning outcomes. What's happening is, if you can go to the monitor learning, Scott, at the very bottom. This is, you'll see, can you guys see the screen? And you should have it also in front of you. I took, I, I captured the attendance. I went through every student. Captured attendance for 2019, and then again for 2021, our last school year, and then I'm also monitoring this, this school year, and the reason is can't have this pattern. Because if you notice, all this red translates to red, not meeting grade-level standards. So if students are already behind in their foundational skills and literacy and numeracy, and all the disruption of being in remote learning for eight, almost a year and a half, they can't afford to miss any more days. I've been, um, can you go to the next one? I'm sorry. Let me stop here before I continue on here. I know that some of you have been taking notes and I forgot to pod.
So Raquel, students with disability, there was a slight uptick as far as the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two CAP scores versus the in eighteen, nineteen. So is there, so what happened there? What's the story? Yeah, yeah. So the red bar was an increase over the blue bar for students with disability.
Red bar is from last spring, right? So our students with disabilities increased by twenty, twenty-four, like five, five percent increase. I attribute that to the small cohorts that we had.
Oh, I'm sorry. I attribute the growth to the small cohorts that we had returning to school. I also know that this is who we've been emphasizing during the whole pandemic, our most vulnerable student groups. Everybody knew that. Everybody was doing their part, whether you're an administrator, teacher, or classified staff, ensuring that you connected and supported the students and targeted their skills that was aligned to their IP, which is why there's a decrease. That's my, that's what I know was happening at least some of the elementary in this. Did anybody else have any questions before?
I had a couple of questions. On this, on the slide, when you were talking about the students of African ancestry, how, I'll add a couple of questions about how many students of African ancestry do we have in the district? Three through six.
Did I hear you say forty?
Did I hear you say forty-seven, Raquel? In third through, third through sixth grade, we had forty-eight, forty-eight. In 2019, we had seventy-six.
Twenty nineteen. Yes, seventy-six. Then in twenty twenty-two, they have forty-eight. Right?
Forty-eight.
Okay. And what was the, what was the differentiation between primary and secondary?
In terms of numbers?
Yes.
I can share that. For eighteen, nineteen, this is for seventh, eighth graders and eleventh graders because they're the ones who take the CASP. In twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, there were forty-one students of African ancestry. And twenty-one, twenty-two, there were thirty-seven students of African ancestry.
At the secondary level?
Second, for seventh, eighth, and eleventh grade.
Okay.
So that's not all students.
Right. Do we have the number for the primary? Because this is third through sixth grade, right?
I only have numbers for third through sixth on the screen and in my notes, just because they're the only ones who take the CASP assessment.
Okay. And then you also have the percentage of IEPs or special education that these students are in, or you have those categories separate, students with disabilities and African-American, are they, how they disaggregated?
So students who are unduplicated or students who have are all, like, they sit for the disability, and then if they're English language learners, I did not disaggregate that any further. I, if you're a student with disability, you're going to be in this data. And you're also a student with disability and an English learner, you're also going to be in this data, if that makes sense. So they're going to be.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So you mentioned as far as the African interest, interest, the students with the secondary language, were they also categorized as English learner?
Correct.
Okay. And that's what I was trying to figure out, right? Because if, if they are a secondary language, it maybe need the additional support that the English learners do get. You know, that, that's an outreach that we have to make as a district.
Yeah, so we're going to go into, because we're getting really strategic with intentional support to address discrepancies and disparities in our scores. Can you go, can you go to the, to the monitor learning, Scott, at the bottom? So again, I will be meeting with administrators and pointing this out, because part of the strategy is not just about the academic learning, it's really monitoring the whole child. Students not there, they can't afford to miss any more days because of all the, the year and a half of remote learning. This needs to be part of the system in monitoring students' progress and performance, their attendance, their knowledge and skills with regards to English Language Arts and math, because we need to continue to prepare them. We need to target specifically and catch them as soon as we can, so we can give the timely support. Can you go to the, back to the slide and then to the? Does anybody have a question about that graph I just showed?
Yeah.
You have that same graph for the third through sixth grades, the, the one that you showed, said secondary students.
I do. So what happened is the sixth graders who took the test last year, they kind of moved on into secondary, which is why I showed that. The chronic absenteeism is not as as high as secondary. Can go to the next slide. In, in elementary. Or at least third through sixth. Again, just as we saw earlier, we saw comparison of student performance in English Language Arts as measured by IREDDI and CASP. Here we see the same thing, only it's in math. Our students have always historically performed better in CASP than they did IREDDI. Especially this year with the adjustments made to CASP. IREDDI did not make any adjustment to their test, but CASP did by decreasing some of the questions by fifty percent. It did not change the depth of knowledge or the complexity of the questions. It just decreased the number of questions. It just decreased the number of questions. If you can go to the CASP I Ready on the bottom left. Can you make the screen a little bigger? And I know the paper doesn't make it any better. But if you notice right here, what I did was using the data from I Ready. And by student groups, you'll notice. The standards. With the percentage next to them, those are the areas of needs for our students. Right here, this section, these are the claims in the E L A and math test. When I say claims. These are broad statements that are, are. That tells students what they are expected to demonstrate on the assessment. So when you look at the far left, third grade, number and operation, twenty-eight percent. Are in need of additional support in number and operations. The students in third grade, all students in third grade. Needs some more time. To develop their concept. Their knowledge so that they can apply their learning skills or the, apply the knowledge and skills. In the areas of mathematics. I mean, it specifically spells out knowledge and skills that students need in the area of math. From third all the way to sixth and by student groups. Does that make sense? Does anybody have any questions? I apologize for not pausing when I should have.
So Raquel, when you mentioned the absences for the students last year, how many were actually in person versus a virtual pathways program?
What was it? Percentage, I want to say there is about roughly around two hundred virtual.
As far as the African ancestry.
Those were all just in person.
In person. And then how many of the absences were excused versus unexcused?
So how many have absences? I'm sorry, can you?
Excused versus unexcused.
I need to look at that.
I'm only asking because last year, we, you know, we asked parents to keep their kids at home if they weren't feeling well.
I did not count students who were out due to COVID and they have a different marking on there. So I can see. When it says, there's usually like a little comment at the bottom or independent dates. Then I knew that they were out due to COVID. So what you're seeing there had, is not COVID related.
Okay. No, I appreciate that because I'm trying to understand because, you know, to the data of the first two and a half months this year, you see some of those students. As far as their attendance have approved, you know, drastically from last year. A few of them.
Yes, if you look at the two thousand nineteen in front of you, I mean, some of them is a continuous pattern where you see the white is where the pattern was disrupted.
Correct, correct. And I'm seeing more white than, than, you know, continuous red.
Which means we're doing a, you know, we're. The team at the site are doing more outreach and connecting with the families and bringing the kids back in.
Thank you.
Quick question for anyone. Who can be categorized as an E L, English learner?
So Yale, Yale designation starts when students register with us at the early onset, so TK in kindergarten. The parents answer four questions that we call the Home Language Survey, and it asks that the students. What the student's first language was spoken, what is primarily spoken at home, what other language is spoken in the home as well? The contingent upon those responses from the families, if they state another language in question one, two, or three. Then we automatically have to administer the initial LPAC. And contingent upon how the student performs on the initial LPAC, they are designated as an English learner. Or they are initially fluent English proficient. So those are the two. That's how they are designated. And then for our reclass process, as mentioned last year in my presentation, we start that in third grade. Is that we set forth the criteria for students to then be considered reclassified. Does that answer your question? Perfect.
Well, Yvonne, is that like a state mandate or is that like just you nodded your head? Does that mean?
Yeah, it is a state requirement. So we receive as a LEA funding to support our English learners specifically. It is our Title III English learner funding.
Thank you.
One last slide to share and then I'll hand it over to Marissa. Go back one, there you go. So on the left side of the screen, these are the claims, the broad statements that students are expected to demonstrate on the CASP assessment. So reading, I'm not going to read everything to you, but it's reading, writing, listening, research, and inquiry. And math, students are the skill targets, concepts, procedures, problem solving. Communicating, reasoning. And the reason why I had that on the left side of the screen is because I want to talk about the next steps in addressing. One of the things that we're doing this year is we're, we're learning more about Science of Reading, which is a research-based instructional strategy. That teaches us about how the brain processes reading. We have seventy-two teachers who actually signed up, which is exciting. Why this is important is because of the emphasis in literacy. Because the ultimate goal of foundational literacy skills. Is comprehension. But if we're not putting more time or paying attention to the phonics, phonics is an area where our English language learners. Are going to need additional support in because some sounds they don't have in their language. Or some letters or characters or what have you. Vocabulary, language comprehension. Science of Reading ties in the two key components, which is language comprehension, phonics. And that is exactly what our students are demonstrating. The gaps in in their skills and their knowledge. So we're, we definitely are moving forward with Science of Reading. The district writing committee, I'm working with our teacher on specialist assignment, Richard Hart. Create prompts. That embed deeper learning. But as I unpack this data. I'm trying to figure out how to. Pull in mathematics into the writings, like informational skills. Because the students need to be able to communicate. In writing. Their argument about whatever math problem they have to solve. So that's something I'm still trying to, I'll work it out with Mr. Hart and the district writing team. TK, as you know, we're all expanding our TK. I have the opportunity to work with our TK teachers this year. And because they're the very foundation, it's a great opportunity for me to start with aligning. Aligning curriculum, aligning instructional practices, and really emphasizing the importance of solidifying our students foundational skills. Hopefully next year, we can bring on Kinder, but right now. I have TK this year, so. We can build on them, then TK next year and move forward so that we can align vertically and horizontally in terms of instructional practices. Research-based instructional practices and the purpose of these literacy, structured literacy instruction. And new teacher induction. They're also getting the professional development with, in reading. In foundation, foundational reading. And also they're already doing the culturally relevant teaching, culturally relevant. Teaching. So we have these pieces in place. We're starting small so that we can go big. In our attempt. To. Go give access. To all of our students regardless of who they are and what their stories. Maybe give access to learning and give them. Same learning outcome, the opportunity to have the same. Achievement level in ELA and math because there's no reason why any student cannot. Again, you see the same thing repeated in mathematics. Using these platforms, these committees and meetings to. Hopefully start building the foundation, start aligning our work. Start digging deep, deeper and start working together. To bring to awareness what's going on. And to work with them in targeting and eradicating the gap. Any questions?
Raquel, I noticed on your left side where you're talking about the skill targets or the claims, there's different colors highlighted on that left side. Some being black, some being green. Can you clarify why some of those are highlighted in a different color?
Pointing that out. So in the area of ELA, you noticed listening is in green. That's the area. That's the claim that most of our students are doing better in. Out of the four, this is where the strengths are. In math, concept and procedures. Mathematical rules, carryover, subtract, what have you. That's what their strengths are in the areas of mathematics. So if it's not green like this, the gray areas, those are the areas that we need to work more closely with our students.
Those are like the. The word problems and stuff like that?
Word problems. And remember, if language comprehension is an area and phonics is an area, mathematic problems right now is tech-heavy. So we definitely need to target vocabulary.
Yeah, I remember I struggled through that as an English language learner student. I always had problems with the word problems.
But we'll get there.
Get through that.
Any other question?
Could you go back to one of the data slides? Just back a couple of slides. That one's fine. How many total students? Do these numbers frame these correlate to in third through sixth grade, just an approximation?
So all third through sixth graders, about two thousand eight hundred. Third through sixth grader should pick the CASP test.
Okay, so.
And that's an estimate.
Twenty-six hundred? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, can you move forward, please, to the slide that's after secondary? And I just want to reorient you, keep going. Again, one more. I just want to reorient you to the colors on the graph. So the blue, and again, I'm going to direct you like Raquel did, to the farthest left. Bars there is our LCAP year one, which was twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Red is how we did in the spring of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and I am talking specifically about our secondary students, our seventh, eighth, and eleventh graders. The gold bar is comparison to Santa Clara County. This spring, and the green is our LCAP target for twenty-three, twenty-four. And when we presented this data to Superintendent Jordan, she had told us, and I agree with this, the red. Really is kind of our new baseline because we did experience two years in the pandemic. And so I really want to pause and focus here on how our students, just like Raquel shared, did in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, our LCAP year one. And this spring. This is a huge success that our students maintain at seventy-five percent. Because like Executive Director Jahari was stating, you'll read articles on a daily basis talking about. Across the nation, the learning loss that students experienced. But here in Milpinas, our students. And I do agree, it's a testament to the focus of the board members, our executive cabinet. Our wonderful administrators and teachers and our community, really wrapping our arms around our students. And our staff to be able to maintain where we were pre-pandemic. However, when we look at our disaggregated data, and this is for English Language Arts. We do notice that in some of the subgroups and really most of the subgroups, our secondary students. Didn't perform as well as they did in LCAP year one, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. With the exception. Of our low-income students here. The other thing I want to point out, though, is that in comparison to the county results, though now comparing the red to the, to the gold bar. Our students did outperform the county in those subgroups. Except for in our African ancestry group. So again, we're seeing similar to what Raquel shared in our elementary data. Now. There's lots of different things that we're trying to analyze to get to the root of this. And this goes along with our C Stace work that some of the board members were able to join us. At a couple of weeks ago. And so doing that work, you know that we had empathy interviews. We had focus groups with staff, students, parents, and community members. I presented to you last year, S E L survey data, also attendance data, and also suspension data. And it's all in alignment, right? There are disparities for our students of African ancestry. I just want to remind you, last year, the S E L data, only twenty-eight percent of our African American students, and by S E L, I mean social emotional learning. Twenty-eight percent of our African American students. Only twenty-eight percent feel connected to adults at school. And only sixty-four percent feel a sense of belonging. So we have work to do, right? And Superintendent Jordan made me aware of an African ancestry success committee that existed pre-pandemic. And we have talked about bringing that committee back because I do think we need to engage our families in the community that are of African ancestry. I think that will do a lot and we'll see some changes in our students' achievement when we are able to meet their needs in terms of S E L. And making them feel engaged and seen and valued on our school campuses. I also want to remind you of the suspension data. And I'm going to come back and take a seat if that's okay. Our suspension data last year for our African ancestry students was at eleven percent. And our expulsions were at twelve point five percent. And in relationship, total enrollment of our African ancestry is one point nine percent. So you can see the disproportionality there. Our current suspension data, our African ancestry students are currently at sixteen percent of our suspensions currently. For our chronic absenteeism last year. African ancestry students again had a huge increase in chronic absenteeism, and that does include excused and unexcused absences. So it, you know, it talks to both. So we could pull out just the excused absences and unexcused absences because you're right, we still were dealing with COVID last year. But for our African ancestry students, there was a fifteen point seven one percent in chronic absenteeism from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen to last year. So what, what does this all mean, right? I do want to go to our. Next slide. Which actually, sorry, go back. That is our math slide. Did you already scroll down, Scott? Or can you go up? Go, can you go up a slide? Yes. So this is our E L A data. And then now you can go back to our math data. I just wanted to make sure I was. Sharing with them the correct data. So now our math again shows similar to what Raquel was sharing with you that across our district. We have lower achievement in terms of math academically in elementary and secondary. But again, looking to the far left, our students at the secondary level. Pretty much maintain their level of achievement. And again, when comparing it to the county results. We outperformed except in our students with disability subgroup and again, our African ancestry. So what are we going to do about it, right, in learning and development? So last year, at the end of the year, alongside our administrators, we developed a strategic plan. That would really focus our attention to our social emotional learning needs and also student engagement, and then of course academics. So really, our short-term goals are to deepen the way we are meeting all of our students' needs. In response to being culturally relevant in the classroom. Again, making sure that all of our students feel seen and valued and see themselves even in the curriculum. So. Things that we've already started to do in our PLCs with our admins is providing absenteeism data. This Wednesday, tomorrow, we will be presenting to them. The CASP data, which they've already seen, and then also they will be bringing with them narratives of their own observations. So we can dive deeper into these data talks, which Raquel, Yvonne, and myself actually engaged in with each administrator. At each site in the last few weeks to really decide what are our next steps. So. Through these conversations, of course, we want to continue to leverage our MTSS handbook, which we created last year. Focusing primarily on tier-one curriculum and instruction, which should be meeting eighty to ninety percent of our students. But by looking at the academic data we just provided. But by looking at the academic data we just provided, we're not there yet. We also want to continue family engagement, and it was really great to be able to be part of the C-SACE. I forget what it's called, PTHI, our summit. I knew it had a special name because we got to engage with some of our families. And there was really a desire to be able to share what's working for them, what are some gaps they see. And so bringing back the African Ancestry Success Committee, I think, is a really huge step in the right direction for us. Additionally, some of our short-term goals, our administrators have been engaging in data walks and cycles of inquiry. And so we're helping to lead them through those talks in looking at data and hoping that they're also replicating those back at their school sites with their instructional leadership teams and their departments or grade levels. Long-term goals, we really want, if you could go, Scott, to the next slide. We really want to focus on these deeper learning assessments. And it's really serendipitous that we're presenting today because today was the first professional development day we had with Envision Learning Partners, who actually just joined forces with Scale, which was at a Stanford. So both of these organizations have now merged and are really powerhouses in developing performance assessments. Not just performance assessments, but high-quality performance assessments. And we met with our English Language Arts and Social Studies Departments from both Russell and Rancho Middle School. And so we started to develop our shared understanding of what do these deeper learning assessments look like and really engaged in some meaningful dialogue, where we're starting to have this shared conversation and thinking about what do we want our end goal to be. So not only do we want to have common rubrics that would really assess students' mastery, but not just on, you know, rote skills or kind of a diagnostic assessment like I Ready or I Excel, but really getting to deeper learning. And so we also started to talk about a graduate profile. So eventually, we would like to be there. So thinking about what do we want our twelfth graders to leave Milpitas Unified School District? What skills do we want them to leave with to be successful? So today was a great first start. Thursday, we're going to be engaging with the science and math departments. And that is just day one for all of the departments. We still have three more professional developments. And I hope by the end of the year, I can share with you kind of our prototype in terms of our common rubric and how they're seeing it impact their student learning. Because really, we want to provide them, not just our students, but also our teachers with these authentic, meaningful experiences in the classroom. And I'll stop there for questions.
Scott, would you go back to slides? To one more. So I see that the African-American and the Hispanic group, you show well, lower performance compared to, is it because these are the datas that you collected from two thousand twenty-one?
So compared.
Compared to two thousand nineteen.
So you're comparing the, the blue line, our year one, eighteen, nineteen, to the red line, which is how we performed in twenty-one, twenty-two? This past spring. So, yes, and I didn't share the Latinx data, but it mirrors our African Ancestry students. As you know, there's about twenty percent Latinx students across the district. Twenty-five percent felt feel connected to school. That's comparable to African Ancestry students, twenty, only twenty-eight percent feel connected. And only fifty-two percent feel a sense of belonging. That's our Latinx. And when we look at our suspension data and our expulsion data from last year and this year, again, there's, there's huge disproportionals. So for our Latinx student last year, we had thirty-nine, they represented thirty-nine percent of the suspensions and fifty percent of the expulsion hearings we held. This year, they're at fifty-seven percent of our suspension data.
So a slight increase.
I think it's hard to make a comparison between the suspension and expulsion data, only because the twenty-one, twenty-two data was the entire year, whereas I'm only presenting you the first, you know, couple of months of suspension data. So there's not as many, but it's still alarming. The rate is still alarming. And for chronic absenteeism, for last year, our Latinx students, again, had about a twelve percent increase in chronic absenteeism.
Plan to reach out to help these group to better perform in the upcoming years?
Latinx or both?
Both.
Both? So again, family engagement, I think, like Superintendent Jordan said, bringing back that African Ancestry Success Committee, I think is going to do a lot. I know for myself, and thinking about just our student relationships in affinity groups. For example, one of the focus groups that our Student Engagement TOSA and our program manager had with just our Students of African Ancestry at one of the sites, the students were taken aback that they saw, you know, themselves in the room. So that should not be happening, right? So one step that I have wanted to do, and I did share with Superintendent Jordan, was reaching out to our local NAACP chapter and President Bob Nunez to ask for supports. What can we bring into our district to really support our families and our students who are not feeling like they belong? Or for some reason are not seeing themselves in the curriculum or in the staff that we have on campuses? Alongside the social emotional support is also the tier-one instructional pieces. So that's where we are working on thinking about more targeted tutoring. Some of that is already being piloted at the middle school level. I would highlight some of the work happening at Russell. He's talking about something else, and I just called him out. But, you know, Principal Ag, from Russell, has done some great work already, highlighting specific standards that need to be targeted for student development. And they are partnering with Milpitas Middle College, which is right next door. And so our high school students are coming over to the middle school to provide tutoring that's also happening with Rancho. So we are trying to make sure that we are both working on the tier-one academic supports. And there's a larger conversation that needs to happen around, is our tier-one curriculum right now the best curriculum to be meeting the needs of all of our students, right? So that's where you want to think about root causes and not just these Band-Aids, but tutoring, because you can't keep that on forever.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything you want to share with us?
And that's why, too, I spent so much time talking about the assessment work, the deeper learning assessment work. Because if that's the type of assessing we want to do, ultimately, it will have to change the pedagogy or the teaching strategies that teachers employ in the classroom.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. When will we be able to correlate grade level standards and proficiency to a time of year?
No, I don't have a good answer for you on that, particularly because a lot of the standards spiral over time. So it's hard, it's not just a, like, you've mastered this and then you move on, but it's really like built layering on them.
But they're still, they're still clearly identified in the different domains that teachers go over at specific times of years. And if you're talking about chronic absenteeism, then when the students aren't there, that's when they're missing certain types of instruction that you're able to map to.
Yeah, so I think part of what you're pointing to is a need for a stronger scope and sequence and consistency across the district around that, so that we can then say, oh, you missed the month of November. Here are the skills, here are the standards that are covered. Is that my understanding correctly? So that's work that we are still doing. I, in terms of pointing to a good timeline for you, ideally, by the end of the year, we should have that scope and sequence work done, and then people invested in it so that we are starting next full year out with it. But we're sort of backwards planning from assessment design to do that scope and sequence.
So how, how will I be able to follow up on that?
Think you know where to find me.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I heard mentioned five different things in terms of how to change or how to improve or modify. I heard monitoring chronic, chronic absenteeism. I heard cultural relevance in curriculum. I heard district wraparound, like the Ask Group for families and students that have belonging. I heard family engagement in the form of family engagement and affinity group type things. And then I heard teacher professional development, which includes common rubrics. Is that what you said? Was there anything that I missed in terms of what the plan is?
When, are you asking just about secondary or overall?
Well, I didn't ask if there's a difference between secondary. I'm just, I'm just referring to secondary.
Okay. I would say, yes, all of those things, in addition to the tutoring and other site-specific things. But in terms of district initiatives or where we are really trying to focus on data analysis and planning next steps, I would say those are our areas of focus. And so the work that we're doing with our administrators in terms of the data cycles or the data walks is around those areas, to be able to collect the data and then determine what our next step should be.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, a question. So is there like a breakdown between like the seventh and graders versus the eleventh graders and their testing? Because the middle schoolers and the high school at eleventh grade is, you know, there's a few years in between, right? So are they testing like the same, you know?
So I don't have that data, but I could provide that to you. However, Scott, if you go back and you go into the appendix, the claim areas that Raquel was talking about. Let me see what slide it is. Slide eighteen is the E-ELA areas. You can see by grade level how, how they are doing. Slide eighteen. Keep going. It's in the appendix section. Keep going. Next, next, there. So this is a little difficult to see on, on the screen, but you can see by grade level how the students did in each of the areas. And then on the next slide, it shows by math claims. And, and again, that's why we're looking at deeper learning assessments, because you're right. Seventh and eighth grade, you know, students are really taking the CASP assessment third through eighth. But then they're, they don't have to, ninth and tenth, not again until eleventh. So what are our checkpoints until then? To make sure that they, you know, are also being exposed to assessments, standardized assessments. But really, we want to get to these deeper learning assessments so that we can really see a full picture of how our students, you know, mastering several standards at a time for one performance assessment.
Okay, so, I mean, are the students being, you know, is targeted to see if this is, if they're testing, like in seventh and the eighth grade, they're testing this average, and then when they get to eleventh grade, they test again. Do we come, do a data comparison to see what?
We did not do that, but we definitely could. So kind of like how, like our current, our eleventh graders from last year, how they performed as eighth graders and seventh graders. We definitely could provide that data.
Well, there's different motivation for those two different groups of students. Eleventh graders know the value of the CASP for their academic journey, for those that know not to opt out. Seventh graders, they're just still kind of following orders and directions. And there was always conversation about, well, what's the value proposition? And they were trying to associate the CASP with getting into college, so that students that took it would be motivated to perform at their best. So I would, I would wonder, you know, if we were, if we would do that comparison, what would we be looking for based on the fact that the motivating factors aren't the same?
Those are all really great points, especially because we know the participation rate by eleventh grade, it does drop down. So I would probably even want to pool, how do our eleventh graders, who maybe don't take the CASP or all, all who at least take the AP exams, how did they do in comparison to the seventh, eighth graders and eleventh graders who took the CASP? Because I think that captures more students also who may not have taken the spring assessment.
Is there any discussion anywhere about the eleventh grade CASP going away?
No, there isn't.
I think we may have the ability to switch the grade level, but we definitely have to test them at least once in high school.
I didn't know that. Interesting. Okay.
Oh, I think we have public comments.
Thanks for asking. Yes, we do have a hand raised. Robert Jung, you're going to enable your audio. Please take yourself off mute, and you'll have two minutes to speak.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the presentation. I'm still trying to understand the data a little bit better, especially on the secondary set of data. I am confused a little bit. When you do those comparisons, are we comparing the same students? Because, you know, you're, you're going to have, if you're comparing it two thousand nineteen, what, to twenty twenty-two, some of those students have already moved on. Is that right? Or am I misunderstanding that?
So it sounds like you're asking for cohort or non-cohort, and this is non-cohort comparisons.
Okay, right. Because I, I, I think the trend in, for me, for a particular cohort makes more sense because we're following the same students, right? So that's, that's all, yeah, that's all I have. I, I was wondering, wondering if, if the data can be sorted by cohorts versus non-cohorts.
And that's what President Yvonne was talking about with Director Quiney.
Right.
That, what, what Robert is saying brings up a question for consideration is that what we should be encouraged by is that overall within the district, over the two years, including COVID, our students maintained their levels. The, there wasn't a significant. There were learning losses in some communities as the data gets aggregated. But for the population as a whole, our students maintained because the data from twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, those students are also represented in the twenty-one, twenty-two data. So they kept going to school, they kept being engaged, and then they were able to maintain a level. And then those that, when we disaggregated the data and we look at the points that Raquel was making around the chronic absenteeism, we should be able to see a correlation for the, these groups, the English language learners, low-income students with disabilities, Latinx and African-American associated with absenteeism. Is that accurate? Do we have that information?
Can you ask your question again and what, how would you like the information presented? But yes, it is accurate. I just missed the point on how you would want the data. But yes, it is accurate. I just missed the point on how you would want the data presented.
So I'm, I'm still, I'm still just being curious that if we show that these subgroups are, have performed in this way and you correlated absenteeism to it, then the subgroups that didn't perform this way, their attendance should be higher. So we should see a correlation of absenteeism that associates with this data as well.
That's correct.
Right, so that goes back to my original question because when you, if you know when they're absent and where we are in the scope and sequence in the year of what they've missed. If you're going to do the high dosage tutoring, you know what to tutor them on, potentially what they're currently working on and also what they've missed based on where we, we know where they are during the course of the year due to their absences. Thank you.
Good.
Are there any questions or comments?
No more public comment at this time.
Can we thank them?
There's no more questions or comments. We'd like to thank you for presenting the data. It was very informative and we appreciate it. And, you know, Mr. Norwood here had.
Like I said, I always, I always love this part to hear how you guys are thinking about the work and how you're approaching the work. And the, and the, the detail that you guys are able to provide in terms of your planning, that's extremely helpful in terms of what can be communicated on a lot of different opportunities.
Awesome. Love this. Thank you. Okay, so we are now moving to item six. Review and approve the closed session agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, okay. We have a motion to approve by Clerk No and second by Vice President Norwood for the closed session agenda. So Scott, would you do the roll call, please?
Okay, roll call vote. Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Clerk No.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
And Board President Yip Chan.
Yes.
Passes floor up.
Thank you. And now are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public at this time.
Okay, if there's no public comments, we now are adjourned to closed session.
Good evening again, Malpitas. I'm your 2022 Board President Kelly Yipchuan. Welcome to this meeting of the Malpitas Unified District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for our opening meetings. Tune into our hybrid-style board meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube or inside our boardroom. Public comments can be made while you're logged into Zoom or if you're in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. For our virtual audience, you will see the instructions for public comments on your screen. Our communication specialists will briefly go over them. For our in-person audience, please go to the podium when you are called on. Instructions for both are also listed on each agenda. There are copies available at the back table. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Two minutes per comment or public two minutes per comment. Our communication specialists will take it from here.
Thank you so much, President Yipchuan. As President Yipchuan mentioned, if you are logged on to Zoom, you've already done step one of having the ability to make a public comment. You will see a hand icon by your name to indicate your request. You'll click on that. We will call on the names in the order they are received. Please listen for your name. Once your name is called, we will enable your audio. You will have two minutes to speak. You'll see the timer counting down on the screen. And finally, we ask that you
Good evening again, Mel Peters. I'm your 2022 Board President Kelly Yipchuan. Welcome to this meeting of the Mel Peters Unified District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for our opening meetings. Tune into our hybrid-style board meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube or inside our boardroom. Public comments can be made while you're logged into Zoom or if you're in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. For our virtual audience, you will see the instructions for public comments on your screen. Our communication specialists will briefly go over them. For our in-person audience, please go to the podium when you are called on. Instructions for both are also listed on each agenda. There are copies available at the back table. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Two minutes per comment or public, two minutes per comment. Our communication specialists will take it from here.
Thank you so much, President Yipchuan. As President Yipchuan mentioned, if you are logged on to Zoom, you've already done step one of making, having the ability to make a public comment. You will see a hand icon by your name to indicate your request. You'll click on that. We will call on the names in the order they are received. Once your name, please listen for your name. When, once your name is called, we will enable your audio. You will have two minutes to speak. You'll see the timer counting down on the screen. And finally, we ask that you please be patient. The Board President will call for any public comment at the appropriate time. Members of the public may address the Board on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and Point 3 preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no responses required from the Board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the Board may instruct the Superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note that the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.3 prohibits members of the Board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the Board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. We do have special accommodations at our, at our board meetings. If you're an individual that does require a special accommodation, we ask that you please call the Superintendent's office at least two business days in advance, and we'll see what we can do. All of our board meetings are broadcast live on both Zoom and YouTube, and they are all recorded. Those recordings are available on our website, www.musd.org. Closed captioning is available on Zoom. Click the closed captioning icon, and the live transcription should appear on your screen. Lastly, if there are any additional documents that were not originally part of the agenda, those are public records and available upon request. Thank you so much, and back to you, President Yipchuan.
Thank you very much, Scott. We're moving on to Item 10, Closed Session Announcement. In closed session, the Board has approved a settlement agreement for educational support and services for a special education student by a vote of 4-0. Kelly Yipchuan, yes. Chris Norwood, yes. Minno, yes. Hanlian, yes. Michael Tsai, absent. Okay, is there a motion to review and approve the open session agenda?
Move to approve the open session agenda.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote. Board Member Tsai.
Yes.
Board Member Liang.
Yes.
Board Clerk Ng.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
And Board President Yipchuan.
Yes.
Unitedamon's Fyvo.
Thank you very much, Scott. Okay, we're now moving on to the flag salute. It's the Mel Peters NJRTC. Could you please come up and approach the podium? State your name and lead us in the pledge, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cadet Khan. Assisting me today is Cadet Nguyen and Cadet Chavez. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please take your hats and boots off and face the flag. Hands over your hearts. Ready? Begin. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mel Peters High School NJRTC. Thank you for your service. Okay, are there any comments from the public? Let's go virtual.
We have no virtual comments at this time.
Okay, we have a green card up here, and it's for a new knockup from the Mel Peters Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anu Naka. And I'm serving as a board member and ambassador for the Mel Peters Chamber of Commerce, and I am extremely pleased to be out here to invite our MUSD Board on behalf of our cham-chamber for the awards banquet night, which is happening and scheduled for 5:00 PM at on October 21st, Friday. And it will be an honor and pleasure to have you all out there to join us and commemorate the event for the banquet awards. Thank you so very much. Hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no more comments. MUSE strategic goals: Build a culture of we that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for future careers. Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and to ensure healthy learning environments. Moving on to Item 15, Superintendent's Report Recognitions.
Thank you, President Yipchuan. For tonight, we're going to begin with our National Merit Scholars semifinalists. And I'm going to first go through each one because I'd like to read a quote for them from each one, and then we'll have them come up and take a picture with everybody. So first, I'd like to introduce Natalie Chen. And Natalie is not only a National Merit Scholar semifinalist, but she is also the National All-American Speech and Debate Awardee. And her speech and debate coach is here with us tonight, Mr. Charles Schlesbaum, as well as her principal, interim principal Felton Owens. And Natalie says, in response to what or who motivates her, she says, "My mom inspires me to work hard for the causes I am passionate about. She sets an example of someone who can balance a career and a family and face life's hardships with grace and determination. She always supports me with empathy and understanding through thick and thin." I'm sorry, that was Rhea Vias, not Natalie. Natalie is, what motivates her to succeed is, "I'm very thankful for the support that my parents have given me to pursue educational and extracurricular opportunities. They have always encouraged me to decide my own path, and I think that freedom contributed to my success." And Tiffany Liu is also a National Merit Scholar semifinalist, says that, "While she primarily motivates herself, it is often my peers that inspire me. People my age from Mel Peters High School and around the world do incredible things, and they constantly push me to rethink the bounds of what is possible." Afnan Waqas is also a National Merit Scholar semifinalist and says, "Growing up, my parents always pushed me to do my best in everything I do, and it's just become a habit of mine to chase perfection." Brandon Wong, also a National Merit Scholar semifinalist. "My parents, friends, and teachers motivate me to succeed at such a high level. I feel responsible for meeting their expectations and performing at my best." And Rhea Vias, National Merit Scholar semifinalist. "My mom inspires me to work hard for the causes I am passionate about. She sets an example of someone who can balance a career and a family and face life's hardships with grace and determination. She always supports me with empathy and understanding through thick and thin." And I'd like to ask each of you to come up and take a photo with the Board, as well as with your family. So first, we'll have all of you as a group, and then we'll have your parents join us.
Superintendent, could you tell the audience what a national semi, National Merit semifinalist is?
Sure. A National Scholar Merit semif, a Merit Scholar semifinalist is a student who has performed well on grades, as well as national tests and state tests, and is somebody that has provided a well-rounded resume, so to speak, in the application. And the semifinalist will be considered for the finalist. And last year, we did have one. And we'll look to see who or if all of them are finalists this year. And the finalist is, does receive some opportunity for grants for college, for college attendance. Okay, so if we could have Natalie come up? And Tiffany Liu? Afnan? Brandon? And Rhea? Let's have you in the middle. Natalie, with your mom and also with your coach, Mr. Schlesbaum, and with interim principal Owens, if you could stay up for a picture for our National All-American Speech and Debate winner? Okay, now, for those of you who attend Randall World Languages School or live near the neighborhood, when you drive down Park Victoria, you may have noticed this beautiful garden that's been taking place and is now actually producing fruits. And we wanted to recognize the volunteers at the Randall Elementary School garden. And I know Vice President Norwood, you've done some work with them as well. So I'd like to thank you all for that, and we're going to read all of the members who have made a contribution to this, and if you would come up as I call your name. Our lead garden volunteers are Jennifer and Eric Devine. Prisant Pulevarthy. Ashak Randall. Jay Big Greens. Larry Edson. Amy Berg. Rosie Gardo, Bordado. Jennifer Baterna. Mary Song and Chen Song. Cheryl Militar. Jasmine Reyes and family. Liz Sanchez. Claudia Herrera. Karen Anderson. Jared Acosta. Justin Everts. Carol Klein. Kaidless Nursery, care of James and Chris. You got you? Ulysses Sanchez with Lane Irrigation. Lorraine Akamoto. Martin Cova Rubio's and family. Bibiana Carbago and family. James Zavalsa and family. Rob Means. Katrina Knickerbocker. Gary Carpella. Myra Sanchez and family. So thank you all, and we could have everybody pull in along with our co-principals for a photo. And I see in the ideas, Ms. Kimmy Schmidt, I know you're also a parent. Did you have, okay, all right. Well, could we have, it looks like our lead volunteers are Jennifer and Eric Devine. Would you mind saying a few words about the vision and where you see it going?
So the goal of the garden is to really make it the student garden. It's not for the parents. It's not a community garden. It's more for the students. So the idea is really to create a safe, inviting outdoor space where the kids can feel happy and comfortable in nature, so to help develop that love of nature, but also to help produce food, which they themselves grow. They harvest, and they eat it. They do it all. And in addition to that, we also want to treat it as an outdoor science lab. So there's definitely an educational component to it as well. So that's kind of the overall vision. We came up with a very big vision for a large space, so it's probably going to take us several years to build it out. But I think we've made huge progress over just the few months that we've been doing it. So thank you, thank you to all the volunteers who have been showing up, especially on a regular basis. Thank you for all the organizations that have contributed and helped us out. It's gone a long way, and it's very much appreciated. Yeah, it's, I guess, in my opinion, the most exciting part is that as of the start of the school year, the kids are already starting to use the garden and are planting. And a lot of the greenery that you see back there is from the students, which is very exciting.
Thank you very much. Missions tonight? And now for my biweekly update on the state of the district. First, to give you an First, to give you an update on COVID this week. In addition to sharing that the Santa Clara County is still low as far as community transmission for COVID, this particular screen also gives us what the current case rate is. And as you could see, it's 78.9 per 100,000. And new admissions per 100,000 is 5.7. And the percent of inpatient beds that are used by patients with COVID is 3.4%. And today, the Santa Clara County Public Health Department shared with superintendents that while the numbers of people who have or where the virus is as far as looking at the water supply, it's similar to where it was during the surge. However, because Santa Clara County is so diligent in making sure that as many of us get vaccinated and boosted as possible, are, as you see here, the number of people who end up going to the hospital is very low in comparison to the two surge points during COVID and last year and the year prior. So if you have not yet received a vaccine, greatly encourage you to do so. And for those of you who have received your vaccines and may have had a booster already, you are now eligible for the new booster called the BiValent. And it is good for the original COVID as well as the two Omnicron B4 and B5. And you'll see that at Burnett Elementary School on October 25th, we do have a vaccination clinic. We already have 59 people signed up. And in addition to having the COVID booster, you will be able to receive the flu shot. The county public health and your school district would like to remind everybody that it's important for us to get back onto our immunization track and make sure that we're getting our flu shots as well as the other normal childhood immunizations that we may have missed during COVID. It's been in the news more so this week than in years past. So I thought I would share with the board what Milpitas Unified is doing in regards to being prepared for prevention as well as intervention in regards to fentanyl. And we do have our school nurse as well as our student services team in process of being trained for administering naloxone, which is an antidote to those who might be in the throes of an overdose of an opioid. I am very thankful to say that there have been zero cases of any students with fentanyl this school year. And for that matter, last year, to my knowledge. Do want to assure everybody that through messaging with parents, with students, and also with staff members, we are sharing awareness and as well as education about substance abuse. And it is October, which traditionally is a red ribbon awareness for substances as well as bully prevention. So to keep this top of mind, if you know of somebody and you're concerned about substance abuse, we do have mental health providers at our schools. And also you have your own physician or we can refer you to members through our social schooling services, social services persons. I'd also like to bring to the attention of the board in particular, as well as our staff here to my left, that the governor signed a number of laws into, a number of bills into law on September 30th. And some of them are in effect immediately, but most, such as this one, take effect on January 1st. And the thing about this one, which is AB 2295, is that is aligned with the board's resolution for housing for educator workforce and for what we've been talking about for the last several school months around retention and recruiting of our educators. We do remember back in August, we were short about 32 paraprofessionals. We still have a large number of paraprofessional vacancies. So for parents or community members out there, please give us a call. We are looking for people interested in working with students. And for AB 2295, what this provides is that for school districts such as ourselves, who own vacant property, as we do, that we can look into investing or selling that property for the purposes of educator workforce housing, as long as that property is adjacent to other parcels that are already zoned for residential. And as a school district, we do not need to request residential zoning from the city or the county. And that's the big piece of this new legislation that is very, is very enticing for school districts. And particularly those such as ours, we're looking for every possible way to continue to keep MUSD in the forefront for a place where people want to come and work and also that they are able to stay. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you Superintendent. Okay, we're moving on to item 16 and it's Superintendent's Executive Cabinet Reports.
Thank you. Tonight, we will begin with our principal report. And that is Mr. Carl Stice and team from Calvert Hills High School. Oops, I'm sorry, Mr. Stice, you're on later for the actual report. It's Mr. England from Russell who is on for the principal's report.
There you go. Is it on? There you go. Alright, good evening, Board and Executive Cabinet. I'm here to talk about a program that we have at Russell. One of the things we've been really trying to do is figure out what we can do to better incorporate our students with special needs as the population continues to grow. It was reported in NPR last week that the autistic population has constantly ballooned over these last two decades. And so we have to figure out ways to help our students not only have a positive self-image, but also their peers have a positive image of them. And so what occurred is I had a conversation with one of my teachers, Mrs. Nitter. This is Barbara Nitter who does Quest for us. We're one of the last schools that I know of in the, I want to say the whole Bay Area, that still has a course that's somewhat like a home ec class. So the kids learn to cook, plus they learn to sew. But she designed a modified version just for the students in our CBI program, which is our community-based instruction program. And then she recruited a bunch of students who she felt would really work well with them. But instead of me talking about it, I would like for you to hear from them.
Hello, I'm Barbara Nitter. I'm the teacher for the new Quest Helper class at Russell Middle School. And we have regular ed students working with severely autistic children and those that have intellectual disabilities.
Currently, our students are working together to put a flower garden right in front of the front office.
Hey Polo, what do you like about this class?
Um, I liked a lot about this class. I like working with my buddy Ryan. As you see, he's playing with his little purple thing. And uh, he always wears the same jacket. I also like this class because it like teaches me patience. And I like working with Ryan because, you know, it's super fun to see him happy. And, you know, it's fun to, you know, just watch him play and help with everything.
What do you think about this class?
I love this class very much and I feel it has opened an oval opportunity for me to experience many skills that I would have learned elsewhere. Though I felt a little uncomfortable taking part at it at first, I feel much better. Really enjoy it.
What do you like about this class?
What I like about this class is that we do stuff other classes don't do, like gardening. And like, and during that, we get to learn more about ourselves while working with our buddies, like skills we didn't know we had.
Hi, this is my buddy Sterling. Working with Sterling has definitely broadened my knowledge on working with different types of people. And I've also really learned on how to react to his different types of emotions. When I first met Sterling, me and him weren't as comfortable with each other. But now after working with him for around up to six weeks, um, we've definitely grown closer with each other. And I feel like I have a special type of bond with him.
Hi, my name is Ullani and I love my Quest Helper class. I love coming there every day and seeing the smile on my buddy's face, Khan, who always makes me smile and laugh. I also love how this class teaches me more responsibility, more helpfulness, and how to be more mature.
You like to dig?
Dig, dig.
You gotta say it louder.
I like to dig.
I feel curious while working with Khan because I get experience working with people, even if I have to do this in the future. It's also a way to socialize with people who have the same interests as you. I learned that it takes patience and understanding while working with buddies and can prepare me for the future if I have to deal with people like this.
Hello, my name's Titus and Quest Helpers really help me a lot. It opens up opportunities for people to get to know the CBI students and can learn new experiences. It also gives us a chance to interact with them and try to get to know them better. My buddy's name is Jan and I really love helping her out. She was interactive and she loved talking a lot. She was really cheerful and that's why, um, I like Quest Helpers.
Hi, I'm Avic Taker and I love the Quest Helpers class. This elective teaches us a wide variety of skills and real life skills that other electives don't get to teach us. It's a very different experience overall for a student and it'll help us in the future.
This is a very powerful program and it helps students see a different perspective of the world.
At first, I was nervous about teaching this class. But the dedication of my students to make it a success has been rewarding and inspiring.
We aren't done yet, but stop by when we are.
So as you can see, this program aligns perfectly with our priority of trying to ensure that all students are supported in with their social, emotional, and academic growth. And at the same time, it really also dovetails with pathways because the helpers now can see themselves as possible social workers and other things of that nature because they, they see that there's more to life than just yourself. You know, you're really trying to help other people. And so this is just one of the things I'm trying to make certain that we can do at Russell to help our students really be prepared for the world.
That's awesome. Thank you.
No problem. Have a good.
Thank you.
Is that a question? No? Okay.
Alright, and we're going to start to the left with Assistant Superintendent of HR, Jonathan.
I get to follow that?
Yep.
That was awesome, Sean. We can also have them pathway into special education teachers and parents as well. Uh, my report Superintendent Jordan and trustees, I'll make it brief. We have been working intentionally in the HR department and with our school sites to monitor our staffing and to ensure that we move people on their status so far certificated. If you were hired as temp, we want to move you to probe one. And for one to probe two teachers before they can be made permanent. Our probe two teachers becoming permits on our next personnel report, you'll see all of these people making these moves. We're excited about this work. I'm also equally excited to say that we've concluded negotiations with our teachers association. I want to publicly thank Diana Orlando and her team and our board for their guidance and support as well as the district team at the table as we sat alongside with our teachers association. And we'll, next board meeting, we'll be bringing to you the tentative agreement. And this has to come after MTA ratifies their TTA in the near future. Also equally excited report that we spent two days negotiating with our classifieds, sorry, California School Employees Association. And it's gone very well. We have TAs and three or four articles and soon three more. And just the relationship that is so positive, sitting down with Suzette Bromagen and her team. And I want to thank our district team and again the trustees for their guidance and support. And last but not least, just draw attention that today, not today, but this month is set aside for breast cancer awareness. It's in my, a place in my heart because of my mom and several family members. So we were impeded to acknowledge and the fight that they go through. Thank you.
Thank you. And Executive Directors of Learning and Development, Mary Jude.
Good evening. As Superintendent Jordan mentioned earlier in her State of the District Report this evening, October is National Bullying Prevention Month. And in MUSD, we will be celebrating throughout the month. But in particular, on October 19th, which is National Unity Day. This is a day all across the world that is celebrated to show unity for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion for all. We encourage all to wear orange this day to send a visible message that all students belong in our district and that no child should ever be bullied. I'll turn it over to you, Executive Director Jahari.
Thank you. And then Scott, I think you're going to help me with some pictures for this section. Um, so as Scott pulls this up, on September 29th, over 50 people came together right here in this gymnasium for the CCSE Equity Summit. As you can see in these pictures, we had parents, teachers, five elementary school principals, board members, MTA leaders, and the superintendent working side by side. The conversation at each table was facilitated by an LND leader, an elementary school principal, and a TOSA, a teacher on special assignment. They were also supported by the culture of we equity team member, team member at each table. A special thank you to Raquel Villa Lobos and Rudolfo Ortiz for translating for this four hour long meeting. Additionally, our state technician, Dr. Mildred Brown, and our Sopa Director Shelley Oda also joined us for this in-person meeting. Together, we reviewed academic data as well as feedback from focus groups and empathy interviews on students' learning experience here in Milpitas Unified. And the goal was to determine where are our success gaps and what are their root causes? These are not easy topics to dive into. So we intentionally spent some time getting to know each other. We started by sharing our hobbies and dream jobs. And then we went a layer deeper by sharing moments when we felt silenced, either in personal or professional conversations when race became a topic of conversation. We use these past experiences to build stronger norms for our team to have purposeful discussion. As such, we were able to build connections with our tablemates before diving deeply into the data. Our group identified a need to focus on aspects of core instructional programs, interventions and supports, and cultural responsiveness. This is just the start. The group will convene again in different configurations to now work on how to address these focus areas. We will present the plan here at the November board meeting in more detail. And also a special thank you to board member Chris Norwood, who also joined us and reminded me to take pictures. I was so deeply involved. But as you can, oh, I think the pictures are gone now. But hopefully you can see like the tables were full. People were deeply engaged. People were leaning in and smiling and chatting. And we were having hard conversations. So it wasn't just on the surface. And so I'm really deeply grateful to our community and how we came together around this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to introduce Assistant Super Business Services Wendy.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I would like to show a short video that created by our student nutrition team. Of course, with the help of our communication specialist, Scott Forstner. So Scott, could you run the video?
Here at Nutrition Services, we have a team of qualified professionals who work collectively to procure, prepare, and serve meals to our Milpita student. We serve products that meet the USDA nutrition guideline, creating a balanced meal focused on whole grains, lean protein, fresh fruits and vegetables. We serve products that meet the USDA nutrition guideline, creating a balanced meal focused on whole grains, lean protein, fresh fruits and vegetables. Every school is unique by its student population and diversity. Our menus are designed to offer a variety of choices that are tasty and kid-friendly. To enhance the dining experience of our students, we carefully consider different service models that are beyond our traditional line, such as a grab and go cart and a salad bar. The federal nutrition program continues to evolve with time. Now with the California's Universal Meal Program, we are serving free meals to all students regardless of their household eligibility.
Well, I hope you enjoyed this video. And now with our director, Sandy Wing back from her leave. And this is just our first step of introducing, uh, this program. And we're planning to provide a short report to the board, um, at the future board meeting. So that concludes for my report tonight.
Thank you very much. And we're glad to have you back too. That concludes the executive board reports. And my executive cabinet.
Thank you, Cheryl and executive cabinet. Board group agreements, I'll read to when we're going on, okay? The, the board group agreements are provided for the boards ready reference as a reminder for our conduct as elected officials. Per by law, uh, by, per Board by Law 9001 admitted on November 26, 2019. Board members of the superintendent agrees to the following. One, keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus. Two, ask questions for our own understanding.
Three, be open and honest with each other. Four, no surprises includes unapproved communications with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district and or board.
Five, be aware that our behavior in the community reflects on us as a team. And six, communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges in open session and in advance of public board meetings and compliance with the Brown Act.
Seven, participate in professional development and commit the time and energy necessary to be an informed and effective leader. Actively support the culture we inaction deed and opportunity to serve the students and parents of the Milpitas Unified School District.
Do we do attendance for our student board reps?
Oh yeah, Scott, uh, do we do attendance for student board reps? Cause I didn't realize.
Uh, we could certainly do that. Uh, let's do roll call, uh, Student Board Rep Ariana Rocha from Cal Hills.
Aye.
Um, Student Board Rep Mira Bakta from Middle College High School. I see she's logged on and, um, our Student Board Rep, uh, Nikita Sharma from Milpitas High School was unable to attend today.
Thank you, Scott. Next item is Board Communications Request. This part of the agenda provides school board members the opportunity to report on their activities as elected representatives. School board members may request a replacement of an item in future board agenda, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. The Student Board Representative reports on school and student activities. Reports are limited to 90 seconds each and we'll start with the, uh, Student Board Rep online.
Okay, uh, let's see. Student Board Rep Mira Bakta, are you available for your report?
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
Um, hi, School Board and various community members present here today. This week at our school, we are excited to be hosting a manufacturing day, which many of our students, including myself, are excited to participate in as it helps us to learn about manufacturing careers in Silicon Valley. Our prep has already started and we're very excited for this Thursday. Um, currently, we are hosting weekly meetings with MUSD alumni currently in college throughout California, like Stanford, UC Berkeley, and just today, Santa Clara University. It helps, uh, it has helped us to understand the pros and cons to all of these colleges and really gain an insight to which college we should be applying to. Uh, we at the middle college now have a high school counselor who has helped us to, uh, walk us through the UC and CSU application along with the Common App application, along with edit many of our essays for the various applications I just mentioned. Many of our students like myself have already taken advantage of this opportunity. Another thing many of our students have recently been heavily involved in is our weekly outreach to students at MHS in order to add more juniors to our class in the spring. We also wanted to highlight one of our students who was recently hired as a paid intern for the Milpitas Speed, who was able to report recently on our mayoral race. We want to shout out Maria Denise Koenka, who continues to show what our students are capable of. We also wanted to highlight a new club on campus called She's the First, who was able to partner with a local pastry chef and, um, basically have a fundraiser where they raised money for the Indigenous Women's Center. Lastly, we look forward to a parent financial aid night on October 26th, open to all MUSD senior parents in order to help them understand scholarships and more importantly, the FAFSA application. We again welcome all MUSD high school, uh, senior parents to attend and it will be hosted, uh, co-hosted by SJCC. And it will be at our San Jose City College Extension with Mr. Castro, our enrollment services coordinator. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Student Board Rep Bakta. We're gonna go to our in-person Student Board Rep, uh, uh, Rocha. Go right ahead with your report.
Um, the Calveras Hills High School report? Um. We're gonna do an in-person presentation?
Oh no, this is, um, just, just as a student board rep, if you had, uh, a summer.
I don't have one.
You don't have one today? That's totally fine. We'll get you next time. And, and like she says, the Cal Hills does have a full report this evening.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, so we're gonna move on to, uh, board members. Um, is Board Member Ty available?
Hello, good evening. Um, is this School Board Member Ty? Uh, since the last board meeting, I've done a number of activities like the, uh, SCC SBA Zoom meeting. And I also do want to give a shout out to, um, our, our student mentioned before, Maria Tuis Kuenka, um, for, um, her participation in the, uh, forums. Uh, as a timekeeper, I attended a, uh, a forum for our upcoming, uh, races, uh, hosted by the Milpitas Speed. And I want to say, um, Maria, you did a great job keeping time. Um, and for, uh, agenda item requests, um, couple things. I do, do just want to request that the AB 361 item gets heard at every meeting. Um, and secondly, I do want to report that I was not given a link for the closed session, um, this time. Which is why I was not able to attend, but I tried. And that goes for the last one as well. So I would like to have that link in the future if possible, because I have been giving, um, out my address as you requested. Thank you.
Kristy Lynn?
Thank you, Board President, and good evening, community members. Um, my activities from the last two weeks, um, I attended the Kiwanis meeting, the Coffee with Cops, um, the housing discussions, the Filipino-American, uh, flag raising ceremony. And I've attended the Thank You America Day. Um, this is organized by the Immigrant Resettlement and Cultural Center. This is very dear to my heart because back in 1975, when, um, the North took over the South, uh, America opened its arms and doors and took millions of Vietnamese people in, um, that gave us the opportunity to a good life. And so I want to say, America, we thank you. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Clerk now.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. So I'll keep it brief. I attended the Equity Summit, uh, that, uh, Pre-Djohari had, uh, organized and that was, uh, a really worthwhile discussion. Um, also attended, uh, both of the Santa Clara County School Board Association meetings, uh, during the past two weeks. And that concludes my report.
Okay, Vice President Norwood?
Thank you, Madam President. I attended, uh, the MUSD C-Says Equity Summit, Coffee with the Cop. Um, thank you, the America Day, uh, the Filipino Flag Raising, American Leadership Forum Education Committee, convening and Silicon Valley Education Foundation, uh, bold conversations, um, in terms of equity in Latino education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as for me, I attended the Coffee with the Cop, the Filipino-American Flag Raising, uh, Day on the Bay, Double 10th Celebration, which is the Taiwan National Day, and they celebrate that the 10th, um, of every October. Okay, so now we are moving on to the next item. Reports. Learning and Development.
Thank you. Tonight, we will hear from Principal Stice and the Calaveras Hills team. I've been working closely with him and his team. Um, what we are presenting on is work that they've been doing that's come out of the Comprehensive School Improvement Grant. They were identified in 2018, 2019, uh, for the CSI grant. And for, for need to improve in graduation rates and college readiness, they've done incredibly tangible and concrete work towards this end. Almost all of the courses now at Cal Hills are A to G approved, which is, um, means that they are recognized by CSUs and UCs across the state. And they've also done tremendous work building up school culture in, in their school. Um, but the team is not ready to stop here. They, their mantra is we gotta go from good to great. Um, so their goal is to build on this progress and, um, tonight they want to invite you into their journey as they outline the next steps for redesigning their academic programming. This work also aligns directly with strategic goal three to develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion for learning to their future careers. So, um, Principal Stice, please come on up and, and invite your whole team. Um, we have student speakers as well as, uh, external partners. So they'll, they will introduce themselves and, and they have a, a promising slide deck here to talk through what they're doing. And they're color coordinated.
Why didn't you notice?
I didn't get the memo. I didn't wear the maroon.
No. I didn't get your shirt. I will, I will. All right. Uh, board members and standing room guests, cabinet. Um, we are so happy to be before you today. Um, I'm gonna very quickly introduce our team and we're gonna go ahead and get started in telling you about our re-envisioning of Calveras Hills High School. Mr. Brian Martinez is a student. Um, Vanaya, Vanaya Mameya, also a student. We have Ariana Roja, who is a student and our board representative. Dr. Kenny Schmidt is a teacher on special assignment. And Mr. Alex MacIver from Partners in School Innovation back here. Um, so what we're gonna do tonight, uh, briefly as we can, is to kind of go over some, first, some bright spots. What have we noticed in our data? What have we noticed in interviews with students that helps us understand what we're doing well? Then we're gonna look at what our opportunities for growth are. We're gonna ask the question, why a redesign and why now? And then we are gonna talk about some school models that we are gonna look at. And then we're gonna make an ask or an invite, uh, to the board at the end. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce, uh, student Brian Martinez.
Good evening, everybody. As introduced, I am Brian Martinez. I'm a senior attending Calaveras Hills High School. So we start off about the school culture. Calaveras Hills High School is known for having a very positive school culture. You can feel it when you walk through our buildings. Data backs us up. According to the most recent California Healthy Kids Survey in 2019, 92% of students experience one or more catering, oh, sorry, uh, caring adults at school. 96% report that adults at school have high expectations of them. Eighty-five to ninety graduation rate for the last eight years. Students who are enrolled at CHHS at the end of the senior year, eighty-five to ninety percent graduated on time. Students who did not graduate with Cal Hills on time are offered a fifth year or choose to finish in adult ed. And this sounds a conservation course program. Comprehensive credit recovery program. On average, eighty percent of students complete all assigned courses with full credit while at Calaveras Hills. Approximately fifty students complete additional courses in the online credit recovery platform each year. Low suspension rate year by year. In 2018 and 2019, there were thirty-one total suspensions. In 2019 and 2020, sixteen suspensions. In 2020, 2021, zero suspensions during in-person learning. And in 2021 to 2022, there were six suspensions.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vanaya Mameya. I am also a senior and I also attend, um, Calaveras Hills High School. I will continue on the list of our bright spots by talking about, um, our options for student voice and choice. Social, emotional learning and restorative practices are used consistently for students to be able to express themselves and their needs while at school. In recent set of empathy interviews conducted by Partners in School Innovation, students report that they have a voice at school and that their voice matters. Opportunities beyond the curriculum. Students have a myriad of elective and club choices at CHHS, including competitive sports, Lions Club, Gardening Club, Crafting Club, and Engineering slash Robotics Club, among others. CHHS has hosted the Fresh Lifelines for Youth Program after school for the past six years. SVCTE is an option every year for students with career technical education interest. A hundred percent of students participate in one or more clubs. Caring and committed teachers and staff. As indicated in bullet number one, almost all students report that there's one or more caring adults on campus they can go to if they need someone. In addition, CHHS has a mental health counselor and SEL circles to support mental health. Recently, we have partnered with the City Peace Project to extend student support outside the classroom.
Oh, why, why redesign and why now? Good is the... Sorry about that. Why redesign and why now? Good is the enemy of great. Mm-hmm. So.
You sit up here too. You know I'm not gonna let you get up. Come on now.
Okay. Why a redesign and why now? Good is the enemy of great. Based on what we have shared with you, Calveras Hills High School is a great school. Students are cared about. School is a positive place to be and there is good relationships in within the community. But we don't want to stop at good. We're gonna move to greatness. There's a fresh opportunity for innovation. With the great new, brand new school built for us, we have an incredible opportunity to make changes, to update not with just the new buildings, but to find new opportunities for us to grow as a school. Where are the opportunities for Calaveras Hills High School to be great? Greater students engagement in learning to make social, emotional, and academic gains. Um, greater access to well-development, educational pathways that apply their passions and learning for future careers. And we want to move to, from good to great.
You've heard from the students. I'd like to share my perspective as a staff member. So we've been exploring the PSI, which is the Partners', uh, data that we, uh, was acquired in the spring during the student empathy interviews. This experience allowed us to look at our practice through the eyes of a student. Naturally, many students shared that positive, wonderful feedback. But also they opened up about where we were not meeting their needs, including preparation for life after graduation and the importance of having a relevant curriculum. As voiced by the students and evidenced by the casp and the dashboard alternative school status, college readiness, and career technical education pathways. We are very well, we are, we are well.
We are very well, we are, we are well aware that we are not meeting the academic growth targets and college readiness expectations. So one solution that we presented in the spring. With the help of pre tea was the launch of April Academy. And our students completed units in poetry and personal finance. Some of their, I have a few of their quotes I'd like to share with you. I learned how to cope with anger and stuff, how to write a poem and I got smarter. I would say that it made me less afraid to talk to others about my opinion. I was able to be more social. Teamwork and presenting. How cool is it and amazing that we have this opportunity to put their feedback into action as we reimagine our new campus?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex, as Principal Stice introduced. And I work for Partners in School Innovation. I printed my notes in about size eight fonts. My apologies if I lose my way. Partners is an equity-driven, continuous improvement organization focused on supporting schools to build lively, loving learning environments for all students. We aim to help the adults within the system develop the skill sets, mindsets, and heart sets to transform public education permanently. We are excited to be partnering with Calaveras Hills High School, Principal Stice, and Milpitas Unified School District. To support this redesign process and rethinking process, innovation process, pardon me. Our work over the last six months has been grounded in three main resources. The Stanford Design Thinking Process, the New York City Improvement Science Handbook, and the book Switch. Mr. Stice and Ms. Schmidt and I have used these resources to engage students in empathy interviews, which I'll speak to in a minute. Sketch out a design timeline with key milestones and based on improvement science. And work to build staff buy-in and input through activities that engage both the rider and the elephant. From Book Switch, if you have not come across. While there's a lot we could share with you about this process. And what we've accomplished so far and speaking and speaking what's the ultimate aim of this work and keeping it centered on students. Mr. Stice asked that I share a few quotes from the empathy interviews. So in May, I had a chance to sit down with about fifteen different students. So about groups of four spent about twenty minutes with each of them, asking a set of questions and just taking lots and lots and lots of notes. I'm a former high school teacher. It's been a while since I've spent that much time with kids. And it brought me back to my passion for this work and what we're trying to do for students. So I want to share a few quotes. So when I ask students, what do you like about Calaveras Hills? What's the value about, excuse me, about Calaveras Hills? They say teachers pay more attention. They care if you graduate. It's the environment. Engaging with teachers more, they actually know who we are. I'm going to read this next one twice. Kids bring sadness and hurt to school and the teachers are here to help them through it. You're different here. You have a chance to rebuild. So I'm going to say that one more time because this was powerful that a student having just met me was able to share this. This is something clearly that was front center for them. Kids bring sadness and hurt to school and the teachers here are here to help them work through it. You're different here. This is your chance to rebuild. And so as the student spoke about the good at Calaveras Hills, this just came through so clearly in those empathy interviews. When asked about that opportunity to become great, a few interesting things came through. One that I wanted to start with is that we need to change our image and these are directly from students. We need to change our image. Cal Hills is seen as the last chance, which isn't. It's an alternative, not a lesser option. When I asked them what they want to see in a school, they said it needs to come down to the things we enjoy. Students get to use their minds and offer their opinions. And we we wish it to be about learning the skills that we could apply and work. And so what we hope you hear from these quotes and what you hear from tonight is that there is a lot of good at. Calaveras Hills and this team is leading to greatness. So thank you for the time this evening. We are partners are excited about the transformative work at Calaveras Hills and in Milpitas as well and thankful for the opportunity to be part of this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And we will end here just another brief minute. So we have some visits. To find out what other people around the state are doing. And actually nationally. So with our connection with pre team. We were able to do a virtual visit to the Chelsea Academy in Chelsea, Massachusetts. It's the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. It was a great way to learn about their personalized platform and strategy of flexible scheduling. And how they tie students into their career interests. The internships and jobs. On October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. We are taking a team down to Porterville and Lindsay, California. To see both linked learning in action and competency-based learning. I'll give you a handout in a minute that has definitions of both of those things. We are establishing a redesign committee and an advisory committee. The redesign committee is going to do the legwork to drive the transition. The advisory committee, which is what we're going to talk to you about very quickly. Is an opportunity for many stakeholders to become involved in the reimagining or redesign process. So I would like Ariana to finish out by reading you about the advisory committee.
The advisory committee, the purpose of the advisory committee will provide high level of feedback on redesign work. From multiple perspectives, including multiple stakeholders. The design team will share updates to the work and the advisory team. Ask questions, vet slash vet the school. Design process. I think you're missing this. Have you considered this? I think blank is, you know, really good because, wait, hold on, sorry. I think blank is really good, is really going to work because I will champ champion this because. The advisory committee will play a vital role in the redesign. We would like to invite Ali's, oh, the last slide. We would like to invite at least one MSMUSD board member to join the advisory committee. We are inviting any board members who would like to join us on our redesign adventure to hop on a board. Additionally, we invite all board members to let us know what you would like us to look for as we're investigating different school models. What would you like to know more about and questions you might want to ask us? You could let us know by calling the school or by emailing Mr. Stice at. See Stice at MUSD.org. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight.
So at this point, we're going to ask, I know we went a little long. Do you have any questions?
Just more of a comment. I really appreciate the team there at Calaveras Hills and really. Looking how you can continue evolving around the students and their potential. Because they do have the potential. It's just a matter of, you know, investing the time in each of them. Not as a class or cohort, but each of them individually. So I appreciate that vision. I would love to be part of your cohort. And lastly, how do I become as stylish as you folks with your Mustang shirts?
Let's re-design our logo and reimagine and then we'll get your shirt. How's that? Any other questions?
No questions, Principal Stice, but I just want to thank you and the group to for the presentation. It is very dear and thank you for sharing the quotes and I can hear that. And I can picture how grateful the students are and how happy they are when they say they bring. Sad and hurt to school, but they know that teachers are there. Listening to them, changing their lives and that second opportunity for you. So, thank you. It's very nice.
First of all, when we started this work and you were at Cal Hills, we talked about. Cal Hills is an alternative school. The quality of education that we offered there was just different than what we had at Milpitas High. And you were left with the charge of building that brand and that reputation and that identity with the students for many years. And to see the students present today, your board member on the board for you to talk about the redesign. When we have the new innovation campus there coming. Congratulations. Very proud of the work that you've been doing there. And the idea, the fact that you're at this stage with the WASP accreditation and so much more. You are truly transforming the brand and the identity of Cal Hills. And when time permits, I would like to partner with board member No and other board members when we have a chance to be a part of your advisory committee.
Yep. Thank you very much, Mr. Stice, and great job, team. I couldn't, you know, compliment more than my colleagues here. So thank you so much for coming here and presenting that.
I just wanted to add, remember in twenty seventeen when we talked about the future of learning and you were there along with your daughter. About what the future of learning might look like. And I'm excited to see how you might incorporate some of that great imagining work that we did. And along with your journey. So thank you for taking the risk and for getting out there to redesign with learners. And recreate Calaveras Hills High School.
Thank you so much. I know I'm speaking on behalf of all of us when I say that we really appreciate having such an incredibly supportive. District Office Superintendent and Board. It's been that way for me since day one and that's why I stayed as long as I have. Thank you.
Superintendent's office, you're next.
Okay, thank you. We have for our report, our annual visit from. Superintendent Alyssa Lynch and her staff. From Silicon Valley Career Tech Education, also known as Metro Ed.
Good evening Superintendent. Jordan and good evening board members and executive directors as well. I also have with me Dorothy Reconosie, which is our Chief Business Officer from Metropolitan Education District. So yes, this is my ninth year visiting. I'm here to really just kind of pop in because I know you know about us, but we always want to remind you and I just. Want to always say thank you for your partnership with us, your continued partnership. When I do put together this brief presentation, it's always with the intent that you know nothing about us. So I always act as if. You're just hearing about us for the first time. So the first slide is just telling you that we serve six school districts and clearly you are one of the six school. Districts and forty high schools. We offer this year twenty-three high-quality career tech ed programs. Nineteen of the twenty-three programs are UCA through G approved classes. Right now, we have a total of twelve hundred and fifteen students, a few extras outside of the JPA. The next slide just shows you if you haven't been to our campus that we are, this is an aerial view made up of twenty-six acres. We're right off Highway eighty-seven. And near Capital Auto Mall Expressway. So I like to always share with you what's new. So what's new this year? We have Principal Jeff Arnett is new. He came to us from San Jose Unified. He'd also been at the County Office of Education. He'd been at Campbell Union High School District. So he brings a great depth of knowledge to us and has a passion for working with alternative education students and great depth. So we returned since last year, since my visit from two hour in the morning section or class to three hours. And so I'm really happy about that because we provide. A little bit, another additional hour of instruction to our students. So that was a big news for us. Anyways, right now, we are super excited that last summer we had a new first time ever summer career exploration program. We put that together, I would say in April and May, and we're really proud that we had eighty students. And it came from, they came from three different school districts. I know we did not have any from Milpitas. And I expect and hope that we have some students from Milpitas next year. So we plan to offer that program again. We're also really proud that we had a second place winner from our Skills USA Student Competition. And in California, it's not very often that you have a Skills USA student that actually places in the national top ten. And so it was our dental assisting student that, as I already said, took second place nationally. So I think that's a true testament to the work that we do in our programs. And moving on, we're also pleased and proud that Supervisor Joe Semidian stopped by for a tour last year. And invested in our programs, was interested in us converting our automotive tech program to an electric vehicle program. So we're in the transition of that right now. And we expect to transition at the start of January. So when students come back from break, they'll have a new program. We also have, they have also invested in us starting a new program next year, which is nursing careers. So we have a lot of medical programs, health careers, medical science, medical assisting. This is going to be one more pathway that we're going to add to our repertoire of classes. And currently we are planning for an after-school program. In my ten years at Metro Ed, it'll be our first time offering an after-school program. It starts in January. And it actually has six different classes. So we'll be offering a program from four to six P M. And it's got medical assisting, medical careers, electrical maintenance, fashion, pharmacy tech, and veterinary science. Many of those classes, actually looking at this, all of the classes are UCA through G. And we're calling it an extended learning option for students in grades ten to ten through twelve. And what this would be would be either an enrichment program or a credit recovery program. So we're super excited about doing that. We're also excited about the way we're funding it. We're funding it from our reserves and from the funds that we have through our JPA. We also started exploring charter schools. So we have with us for the first time this year, three students from KIP Charter School. And we hope to expand that either at the semester or next year. And we brought to you some testimonial from our summer career exploration program. This is a couple of minutes of a video.
This summer, Metropolitan Education District focused. Shin provided high school students with. This summer, Metropolitan Education District focused on building a fun learning opportunity for students. Silicon Valley Career Technical Education provided high school students with a CTE Summer Bridge Program.
This year for the Summer Bridge Program, students explored different courses. In fashion, they developed their brand, their logo, and they started to develop their entrepreneurship skills by developing. A concept of the business, designing clothing, graphic prints. And this really allows our students to see SVCTE as a possibility for the future.
Silicon Valley Career Technical Education Team set forth to provide the opportunity for high school students to get a taste. Of what CTE courses are available in high school. A hundred and fifty students signed up through this process to experience medical assisting, pharmacy, fashion design, and veterinary science.
For me, like, life is about finding out what you're passionate about and maybe what you're not so passionate about. And so for her, I think this was a great opportunity to do that. In a really relaxed setting.
The four weeks of career exploration provided ten elective credits. Students are given an introduction and start to learn the basics of each career pathway.
I thought it was really fun. I originally joined because I wanted to try out the veterinarian science program. But I experienced the other ones such as medical science and medical assisting. And now there are like so many options and I feel like maybe I want to go into the medical career field. And it was just like such a good exploration and so much fun.
SVCTE has twenty-three courses run by.
S V C T E has twenty-three courses run by industry leaders. And nineteen of our courses are U C A through G approved. Our accredited instructors prepare students for college and future careers.
During my senior year, I'm really interested in coming back here to look maybe into the dental field again, but I have now opened my eyes toward the pharmacy route.
And so now we're going to move on to the best part for you, and that is your student data. So we're pleased to to share with you overall in the big picture. Last year, we had nine hundred and eighty-nine students that were completers of our program. Of the nine hundred and eighty-nine, fifty-six students received dual enrollment credit. And sixty percent of our students are going on to college. I always share that because to me that's really important because people think vocational education. Is for other students or that those students are not going to college, but more often than not, they go to college because of us. They come to us and then they realize that they actually learn very well and that they would continue studying in the same area. We also produced three hundred and ninety-six students with industry certifications that testifies to. The program and the skills that the students learn. And then again, Milpitas Unified School District, your data, we had forty-one students received A through G credit. Twenty-four students had articulation credit, thirty-eight students. Received certifications, two students were Skills USA competitors, and you brought home one gold medal. The next chart is part of our data dashboard. It's a little difficult to read, but going from the top or starting from the top, it's medical assisting. It's basically showing you the total overall enrollment at S V C T E. Shows you where the bulk of the students are. The medical assisting is most popular, then auto services, dental assisting, all the way down to. Auto services, or I should say that that's advanced auto services. The point of sharing this chart with you again is just to show you where the student interest lies. And I'm going to move on to the next slide. This particular one is the current twenty-eight students that you have at S V C T E. And you can see that you have five students in the dental assisting program. Three students in medic, or I'm sorry, in sports medicine, three students in medical assisting. Three students in fire science and two students in medical science, and then all the way down to auto services. You get my point that you have a nice variety that the students are enrolled in at S V C T E. Also, the demographics are there for gender, male, female, number of students. You don't have any that have I E Ps either. And the last couple of slides rounding get out. Your student enrollment, twenty-six are from Milpitas High, two from Calaveras High. So we'd like to work with you a little bit more, Calaveras High. And then this just each year I show you the overall student enrollment. From two thousand and seventeen to twenty twenty-two. So you can see it goes up and down a little bit. And that concludes my report. And I'd also be interested in helping with the redesign if ever interested, whether it's one meeting or two, three meetings, I'm happy to volunteer. My time for Calhills High. I'm passionate about what they do there as well, and I visited that probably like seven years ago. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And how will learners find out about the January after-school program?
You'll hear about it next Tuesday at our Executive Council meeting when we're bringing it forward first to the superintendents. And once, and then it will go to the instructional council, which Pretty is a member of that or a designee. And then we have this flyer that will go out to each of the counselors to promote that. And then we'll have online enrollment. Great, thank you.
And what are the age groups for the summer program?
That's interesting. It's actually ninth through twelfth. We've actually thought about even expanding to the middle grades. So we first started with the, I want to say the summer school, then we're going to do the after-school program, then we're going to reach down to. Doing career exploration with middle schools, one step at a time. But we're super excited about all the new things that we're doing.
Thank you. And I don't know, what was familiar with the term articulation credit?
It's getting credit for your high school program in college. It's already college credit. So. In high school, it's five credits. When it transfers over to the community college, you would get three credits. So for a high school student, not only do they get the credit, but they don't have to pay for it. So it's equivalent, a high school program is equivalent to a program at college level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Alyssa, I just want to make a comment. I remember asking you for the breakdown. Of how many, I guess, the ratio of M U S D students. And I appreciate that you have that chart in there. And that's what I noticed that I was looking at that. So thank you very much for this, these slides and the presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now we are moving on to item twenty, action item, and the first one is business services.
Yes, tonight, we would like to ask the board to accept the Bond Oversight Committee's annual report for the year of. Twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And as you recall, in November two thousand and eighteen, the voter of the city passed a two hundred and eighty-four million bond. As one of the accountability requirement of the bond and we, the district is required to establish a. Bond Oversight Committee. So tonight, we have our Chair of our C B O C, Mr. Joseph Weinstein here to present the board of our annual report.
Superintendent Jordan, board members. Executive Director and staff, I am the Chair of the C B O C. The Chair serves one year. Every year, we have a new Chair. It's my responsibility tonight to deliver this report. The one change that we've had in the last couple of months is we're actually now meeting in person again. So in previous reports, we have told you that our process is. That we get quarterly reviews that are submitted to us by construction and by finance. The meetings that we have consist of receiving in advance. They include information in each school's project, their status, construction dates, and financials. All the quarterly reports are public. But what's really different about our committee, and I actually want to highlight it because I have joined the. California Citizens Bond Oversight Group. The things that we do are a little bit different than is required by law. And I think everybody needs to really credit Superintendent Jordan. Before we pass this bond, she asked to meet with some of the old. Bond members for the last bond and ask us what we thought should be done to improve. The process. And one of the things that the law only requires us to approve an annual report. Superintendent Jordan said that that wasn't enough and that she wanted us to have the ability. That if something concerned us that we didn't feel was either answered by finance or by construction. That we had the ability to come before you. And so in a meeting that we had where we talked about the operations of the C B O C. I got to credit David and Scott because we showed them a process of. One of the board meetings, they were astounded at the openness and the open relationship that this board has. With us. Is that across the state, what we have found is that most of the C B O Cs have a very hands-off. Arm distance and somewhat. I'll say tension-filled relationship with the board. That is not our experience. Every board meeting, Travis comes up. He reports to us on what the construction projects are, what the delays are in the, in the industry. What are the construction challenges they may face? Wendy reports to us on what the finances are. What the challenges may be with interest rates and things like that, always in an up-to-date budget. Deanna reports on every single line item in the budget that is a challenge. This is so different from, from boards that we've talked to across the state. There's complete openness from the district as far as we're concerned. And. For this year, none of the board members have changed. We've, we've all stayed on. I know that I think two or three board members' terms are expiring. Everybody on the board has asked you guys to approve us again. I just want to report that this is probably one of the better relationships the school board has. With the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And for that, I've got to thank Cheryl and Wendy and Deanna and Travis. Because they really are absolutely open. Every question that we ask, they answer. If it's something that they can't answer immediately, they will follow up. It really is a great relationship. So the board voted unanimously to accept the report. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Also, we have Tom Barori, one of our C B O C members here in the audience who says.
Are you guys crazy? Thank you.
No, we're not. Motion to, this is the next item, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and then there's a second. Do we have any public comments at all? None? Okay, there's none. Let's go for a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Hi.
Board member Leanne.
Hi.
Board clerk, no.
I, but Scott, don't forget our student board reps, please.
Student board rep Rocha.
I.
See, student board rep Bagda.
Hi.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Hi.
And board.
Hi.
And Board President Yipchuan.
I.
Passes unanimous.
Okay, we are moving on to. Number two, Superintendent's office, adopt resolution twenty twenty-three point one seven.
Okay, we have with us our students via video for recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. And in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day, I would also like to point out that. It's not completely new, however. It is somewhat new, I think, to M U S D. And in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day, I would also like to recognize that Milpitas Unified School District is. Grounded in the foundation of the Ma'akma' Aloni Native Peoples. And that we. Extend our gratitude and appreciation for the. Opportunity to live here together in community.
I am a senior football team player, receiver, in twenty twenty-three, recognizing and honoring October tenth, twenty twenty-two as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas Indigenous People's Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy-seven by delegation of Native nations of the United Nations. International conference of discrimination against Indigenous populations in Latin America.
My name is Drake Korea. I'm a senior linebacker running back at Milpitas High School. Whereas in nineteen ninety-two, at the five-hundredth anniversary of Columbus' first voyage. American Indians in Berkeley, California organized the first Indigenous Peoples' Day, a holiday the City Council formally adopted. Whereas of two thousand and twenty, fourteen states and more than a hundred thirty cities celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October. Whereas today, there are over six hundred Native nations in the U S, six point eight million Americans identified Native American.
My name is Michael Fong. I'm the center and defensive end for Milpitas Football Team. I am a class of twenty twenty-three. On Columbus Day, it is a federal holiday established by an order of President Roosevelt in nineteen thirty-seven. And it is officially recognized by some cities and states around the country on the second Monday of October. But does not currently provide an opportunity to reflect on the colonization of North America by Europeans. Prior to colonization, Indigenous Peoples lived and flourished in Americas for thousands of years, including such leaders as Ponponio. And Charquin from Mission San Francisco. Estan, Estan Slo from Mission San Jose. Capriano and Jos Colo from Mission Santa Clara. Ma'akma. Leaders captains, Leopardo, Quinno. Captain Jose Antonio, Mayan, Chikolo. Sasuyo, Jose Guzman, Maria de Los Angeles. Colos, Margarita, Quinos, Juarez from Mission San Jose.
I'm Jacob Chothe. I'm a senior athletic linebacker. Regionally, the Aloni Drive of the San Francisco Bay Area is aboriginal to the counties of San Francisco, San Mateo. Most of Santa Clara, Alameda, Contra Costa, and portions of Napa, Santa Cruz, Solano, and San Jacinto. The European colonization of North America led to the suppression of forced assimilation and genocide of Indigenous Peoples and their cultures.
My name is Ziggy Medina. I'm a part of the class of twenty twenty-four, and I play receiver for the Milpitas Trojans. Whereas Milpitas Unified School District recognizes and values. The vast contributions made to the United States by Indigenous Peoples' knowledge, science, and philosophy, arts, and culture. And whereas it is the responsibility of Milpitas Unified School District to foster inclusivity. Ratio equity and justice for all people and opposite systematic practices that perpetuate oppression. Whereas Milpitas Unified School District recognizes its responsibility to honor the nation's indigenous roots. History, traditions, and cultural contributions.
My name is Brian Aglora. I'm a Milpitas Trojans, class of twenty thirty-three, I play receiver. Whereas the second Monday in October would be an appropriate date to designate the Indigenous People's Day. Now therefore be resolved that the governing board of the Milpitas Unified School District, going to other communities in the school district. And our nation in celebrating October tenth, twenty twenty-two as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And encourages others to observe Indigenous Peoples' Day with appropriate ceremonies and activities. That celebrate and promote awareness of Indigenous Peoples. Indigenous Peoples and their shared history and culture and supports of the official designation of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Passed and adopted by the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on October eleventh, twenty twenty-two by the following vote. Go Trojans.
Is there a motion?
Both.
Go ahead.
Move to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-three dot seventeen.
Second.
Second. Do we have any? Comments? If not, we'll go for a roll call vote, starting with the student, student board reps.
Yeah.
Shirley, student board rep Rocha.
I'm.
Student board rep Bagda.
Hi.
Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Leanne.
I.
Board clerk, no.
I.
Board VP Norwood.
I.
And Board President Yipchuan.
I.
Passes unanimous.
Thank you very much, Scott. And now we are moving on to. Enact, is that the A B three sixty-one? For additional thirty days.
So as we have done for our practice, the first board meeting of each month. We are presenting A B three sixty-one for the board's opportunity for consideration. Of implementation and with a. Reminder that there are one of three conditions which must be present. That there has been a state of emergency declared either locally or at the state level. And that. Having people present in person would pose danger to some, if not all.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion to.
To enact A B three sixty-one for an additional thirty days. We're going to get the, the motion in a second, and then we'll have a discussion.
Okay. Motion.
We have a motion on the table, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we're open up for a discussion. Scott, do you have any public comments?
We have no public comments this time.
Okay, are there any comments from board members or student board reps? No. Do you have any comments?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Um, just quick questions. Pretend, how many board meetings do we have left, uh, for this calendar year?
Uh, for this calendar year, in terms of those in office, we have the fourth Tuesday of October, and then we have the meeting, which is the third Tuesday of November. And then December begins with the new board.
Gotcha. So for the calendar year, three more board meetings. Cause I, I know that I saw, um, in the weekend report that AB twenty-four forty-nine, uh, was passed and that, um, uh, enacts January first.
Right.
So that allows board members to, uh, basically call in remote two times, uh, during the year, I believe, right?
Right.
Gotcha. So i- it, from my perspective, I don't see that we need to enact AB three sixty-one, uh, for the remaining three board meetings because of the, the new act that will be available January first.
Thank you, man.
One second. And then you said the new thing starts January first of twenty twenty-three, correct?
If you read the weekend report, it's there, the information.
Right, so you're telling me that starts January, but then there's a few remaining for this year. So from what you were saying, you were sound, you were sounding like you're saying it's redone for this year, because my understanding is it's different.
I believe that based on what superintendent had said, as far as staying a, uh, state of emergency, I don't believe that we, we necessarily need to do that for the remaining three board meetings of this year. And that's my opinion, board member Si.
Thank you, clerk No. Are there any further, uh, comments, questions? If not, we will go for a roll call vote.
Okay, uh, student board rep Rocha.
Aye.
Should I not include student board reps?
You can exclude them, I believe, Superintendent Jordan, remember, based on what you said previously, they just don't.
Yeah, vegetarian personnel matters, they wouldn't, but this isn't either.
Okay. Uh, board member Bhakta, or student board rep Bhakta?
No.
Okay, and, uh, board member Si.
Uh, yes.
Board member Leanne.
No.
Board clerk No.
Nay.
Board vice president Norwood.
No.
Board president Yipchuan.
Nay.
Uh, measure fails four one.
Thank you very much, Scott. Okay, we are moving on to see determined if board member absences meet criteria for compensation under bylaw. Uh, ninety-two fifty.
Thank you, uh, at our special board meeting, we had a closed session. And, uh, two board members were absent for a part of that meeting. And at the last, uh, regular board meeting, uh, member Si was not present for a closed session. And we did provide notification that closed session would be in person only.
Okay, thank you very much. So let's, um, go to the September nineteenth special meeting. So we'll, we'll just go one, um, at a time. So we're just gonna start out with board clerk Minno. Join the meeting late for the final forty minutes of the closed session only meeting.
Yeah, just, um, that was an emergency closed session meeting at two P M. I already had a pre-scheduled conflict that couldn't, um, reschedule. And so I joined as soon as I could, um, from my already pre-arranged meeting.
Okay, should we vote individually? Okay. So, um.
I'd like to hear, um, mine as well, since you discussed trustee notes.
Board members, I will get to you. We're gonna vote one person at a time. Thank you. So, um, are there any questions for, uh, clerk Minno? Before we, we go for, uh, a roll call vote.
Sorry, so just, uh, for the record again, what was, was the start time and the end time of the board meeting? And when did clerk No come in?
Just start, start time was two P M, um, based on what was, I put on the agenda, I said, uh, forty minutes late. I don't remember the end time at that point.
Uh, cause from what I recall, you were here for like the last maybe twenty minutes of the meeting. I, I mean, I don't have the exact times, I don't know if someone else caught that.
Do we have any public comments?
Uh, there are no public comments at this time.
Okay, so let's, uh, go for a roll call vote to, uh, this is, uh, so we're gonna, um, for clerk Minno. If this absent is to be determined if it meets the allowable criteria for compensation. So is there a motion for this absent to be excused?
I motion.
Do we have a motion from trustee Lynn?
Yes.
Second.
We have a second. Okay, if there's no further questions, comments, um, we'll go for a roll call vote.
Okay, and then this one, uh, we won't be including student board reps, because it does have to do with, uh, monetary, is that correct? Yeah, okay, uh, board member Si.
Abstain.
Uh, board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk. Stay, okay. And, uh, board vice president Norwood.
Yes.
And board president Yipchuan.
Yes.
Passes three oh with two abstentions.
Okay, we're moving on to board member Michael Si left the meeting for the final forty minutes of the closed session only meeting.
Uh, no, I was, uh, I was there for the vast majority of the closed session meeting, uh, despite it being called at almost the last minute. I rescheduled, um, my time, and I was here for the vast majority of that meeting. And if anyone doubts that, I can, I can provide backup of when I did, uh, join the meeting. And I, I was there.
Okay. Um, are there any public comments?
Uh, we have no public comments at this time.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve board member Si, um, for the board meeting. In question.
Now, second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Are there any further discussions? If not, we'll go for a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Uh, yes.
Board member Leanne.
No.
Board clerk No.
Abstain.
Board VP Norwood.
Yes.
Board president Yipchuan.
Yes.
Uh, that passes three one with one abstain.
Okay, we're moving on to the September twenty-seventh regular meeting. Board member Si was not present for the closed session portion of the meeting.
Um, yeah, so before that meeting, um, I've been calling into closed session of a number of times now, um, with everything that's been requested of me regarding like the address and the location and all that. So, um, I did give, um, the address, um, while in advance of the board meeting. Um, however, I was notified, I believe, only it was after I gave the address and after the agenda was published, I got a notification shortly before the closed session that, um, if I'm not gonna be given a link. So to me, that completely took me by surprise. Um, I had, I had made my plans to, um, call in, um, remotely, like I have done for several meetings now without incident. Um, so yeah, and, you know, if, if I had gone in there, I would have been told, oh, we already posted your location at the other place, so you have to be there. So it was, it was a situation that was impossible. Uh, but yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to continue just calling in, posting my address as, as been requested. Um, this, this was dropped on me by surprise.
So as a reminder, in the weekend report, uh, prior to that board meeting, I provided to the board that, uh, our legal counsel said that we do not need to provide access to closed sessions, uh, via virtual virtual access. And so we gave notice three times, I believe, that the closed session would be in person only. Mister Forster, could you verify?
Um, yeah, according to my timeline, uh, we had, I usually send out an email asking for the status of board members leading into, uh, posting the agenda on Friday. On that Thursday, uh, Superintendent Jordan, uh, replied email to all board members informing them that closed session will be in person only on Friday before about, I'd say, right before five o'clock. Board member Si indicated to me that he would be virtual. He gave me, um, his address, and I posted the agenda. That was, um, and then on Sunday, it was reiterated that closed session would be in person only. So there was a notification prior to Fri- that Friday that it would be in person only for closed session.
Yeah, like, I, I just saw the Sunday email. I was, I mean, it's reasonable for me to assume that, you know, I could call into closed session like I usually do. Um, you might say you're not required to provide a link, but again, uh, I think it's just, it's easier for access and transparency. Um, it just hasn't been an issue before for me calling into closed session, so I don't see why it should be an issue now. You might say you're not required to provide one, but given that I've been providing my location in good faith, I think, um, it's reasonable just to get one. So I would like that.
So just one final, uh, note on that, um, president Yipchuan, is that during the special board meeting that was in closed session with legal counsel, when we were delayed nearly thirty-five minutes in start time because of the difficulties with the virtual, the legal counsel, um, Greg Dennis told us that we did not have to provide virtual access and that there's nothing in Brown Act that requires closed session to be accessible to board members virtually. And so, uh, given counsel's advice that for the efficiency of our closed session meetings, we have discontinued the virtual participation.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I do recall that, because, um, every time, you know, um, we try to set up the, uh, the virtual meeting, it would cause delay anywhere from like twenty minutes onward, and that causes to delay, and then it's like a domino effect, then our board meeting, uh, was also delayed. So I do remember, um, our legal counsel had, um, brought that up to us. So, okay, thank you very much for the clarification, uh, Scott and Superintendent. Do we have any, uh, public comments?
We do have a hand raised virtually. Uh, Mark Doyle, we have enabled your audio. Please take yourself off mute, and you will have two minutes to comment. Go right ahead. And Mark, you just have to take yourself off mute. Um, and it looks like his hand may have been raised in error. He just took it down. So we have no public comments at this time.
Okay, if there's no, uh, public comments, we'll go for a, uh, a motion right now at this time. Is there a motion to, um, oh, I'm sorry, um, we do have a.
Yes, I'm a little bit confused by the fact that last week I observed, uh, Mr. Si at a uh, forum for, uh, candidates for the city council.
Mister Valori, I'm, I'm really sorry to cut you off, but, um, you have not filled out a speaker card.
Oh. Okay.
Wanted him to fill it out.
If you'd like to fill one out, we can get it.
Okay, while, while he's filling out or getting the card, he can, uh, come up and, like, speak. Yeah.
Thank you for following procedure. Appreciate it.
Sorry about that. Uh, last week I observed, uh, I, I observed Mister Si on uh, participating in a forum for the city council, uh, candidates. Uh, he was flanked by two other individuals. He sat in the middle. He was totally unprotected, no mask, no pretense at being concerned about COVID issues at that particular point in time. Uh, however, I consistently see him not attending board meetings uh, under the pretense that he's concerned about COVID. Co- being concerned about COVID seems to be an issue of convenience as opposed to something of, uh, reality. And for that reason, I think he should be, uh, appropriately chastised and, uh, whatever the appropriate, uh, action is.
Thank you, Mister Valori. There's no more, um, public comments? We'll, uh, ask for a motion.
No more public comments this time.
Okay, is there a motion to, uh, excuse? Oh, we did that already. Wait.
Um, I don't, I, I didn't record a motion in a second for this one.
I didn't recall.
Yeah. It was, so, so there was, first we did, uh, board clerk No.
Yeah, that's correct, Scott. Right, that's correct.
Okay, is there a motion then? My thinking has.
It's the Thomas Florries.
Is there a motion?
Uh, move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, now we're open for a, uh, discussion.
Madam President, I believe there'll be any, um, additional discussion. Questions were answered when the issue was brought up.
Thank you. Okay, let's go for a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Leanne.
No.
Board clerk No.
Abstain.
Board vice president Norwood.
No.
And board president Yipchuan.
Uh-uh, no.
Okay, uh, motion fails three one with one abstain.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Okay, we're moving on to item twenty-one. Consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for, for discussion or correction. Are there any items that needs to be pulled?
Uh, president Yipchuan, I did, if she's still here, student board rep Bhakta, I know she wanted to, um, comment on one of the consent items. Are you still here, student board rep Bhakta?
Uh, yes, I still am.
Okay, do you, uh, what was the, um, number you?
I was, I believe it was, uh, C.
Was it, um?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you wanna?
Yeah, I just had a, a quick comment that I wanted to quickly just explain why we wanted to, um, attend this field trip specifically and just explain, uh, the reasons behind it.
So, uh, in procedure, Scott, uh, we would have to pull the item first before discussion. So, uh, with that said, I, uh, move to approve all consent items except for, um, item IC.
Second.
Your roll call vote, Scott.
Okay, and then with the roll call vote, um, with consent items, is it, do I include student board reps on this one now? Okay, I didn't think so. Just wanted to ask. Uh, so, uh, roll call vote, board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk No.
Aye.
Board vice president Norwood.
Aye.
And board president Yipchuan.
Aye.
Passes unanimous.
So then, Mira, go ahead and, and speak to, um, the field trip.
So I wanted to reiterate that our school field trip, this field, uh, field trip specifically is going to help students. So I wanted to reiterate that our school field trip, this field, uh, field trip specifically is going to help students, like myself specifically, increase the relevancy in what we're being taught, specifically in our American government class. Uh, sort of just see how they play out in real life. Currently, we are in our unit about the Senate and how led- the legislation process works, which by meeting with assembly members will help us to piece together all of our previous lessons and sort of be able to visualize it. As well as visiting the UC Davis campus helps us to understand how close we really are to achieving our goal of going to college while also learning about one of the most prestigious colleges within the United States, or within the state specifically. Uh, it can help us to avoid, uh, dreaded senioritis, so that is why I believe the field trip specifically is necessary for our juniors and seniors.
Thank you, uh, Mira.
Motion to, uh, approve item IC.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, the second? No, no comments. We'll go for a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote for this individual consent item. Student board rep Rocha.
Yes.
Student board rep Bakka.
Yes.
Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Leanne.
Aye.
Board clerk No.
Aye.
Board vice president Norwood.
Aye.
And board president Yip Chuan.
Aye.
Passes unanimous.
Okay. Item twenty-two, dates of future board meetings. October twenty-fifth tentative study session, five P M, tentative closed session, six P M, open session, seven P M, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and Randall Elementary World Languages School at thirteen hundred Edsel. November fifteenth tentative study session at five P M, tentative closed session at six P M, open session at seven P M, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and Randall Elementary World Languages School, thirteen hundred. Uh, item twenty-three, announcements, reminders. Are there any announcements or reminders? Um, start with executive team members. Nope, seeing none. How about board members?
Uh, actually, I want to just thank our student board reps today for their engagement, both Mira Bakka and Ariana Rocha. Um, it's refreshing to see both of you, uh, engaged, presenting, and also requesting to speak on consent items. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. Uh, we have two MHS alumni from two thousand and seven, Eddie Alvarez and, uh, Howard Garcia, as well as MUSD retiree Barbara Lorenson. Um, passed away, so, um, we can have a moment of silence for them, please. Thank you very much. Um, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote. Student board rep Rocha.
I'm.
Student board rep Bakka.
Aye.
Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Leanne.
Aye.
Board clerk No.
Yes.
Board VP Norwood.
Aye.